I don't.
I can hear you guys.
I can hear you guys.
Yep, it's working now. Yep.
Um, Doris, how are you feeling?
Oh, better. Thank you.
Okay, are you gonna be our clerk this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Doris, you're a little muted, sound aid.
Am I?
He sounds good to me. I don't know.
It's not. It's coming through the TV instead of the owl.
You have to unmute the owl. If the light is red on the owl, it's still muted. So if you go to the mute, you can select the audio and select the owl.
What do we do without perks?
No idea.
No, they're so fine.
Did you find it? Okay, try again.
How does this sound better?
It's like you're right here with us, Doris.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we'll get started with our workshop. We have three items tonight. First up is public transportation from Alex. Welcome, Alex. Okay, thanks for being here. Alex is gonna share his screen for his slides. Erin, we have some.
We just wanted to decide wherever.
Um, how about to the top?
Some option across the top. And you know, your perfect show. So Alex is with Boulder Drive Transportation. He works very closely with staff on all things regarding. Anytime we need any information or grant assistance or maps made, Alex has been a wonderful partner with the Town of Lions. And the board had had some questions about RTV and about some other, you know, potential future of some of the transportation issues here. So we just asked them to come and present to the board. And so we have about 20 minutes. So if you want to present and then leave a little time.
So much for the interaction. My name is Alex Seider. I'm also a little planning division manager for the board. And as we've already said, I've been asked to provide a review of pretty much all things related to public transportation in Texas town lines. So a quick overview of what I'm going to cover that will include the ECO Pass program, the Taxi Voucher Program, Lions Flyer, the upcoming strategic transit plan, and then the 2024 legislative session. Starting with the ECO Pass program, which is the oldest public transportation programs in Lions. This was launched back in 2013 and was transitioned to a little by born at the end of last year. The ECO Pass provides unlimited rides on all of our services, including the A D triple four, fly on flyer to Denver, the skip open Boulder on Broadway, and all of the bus, light rail, and regional rail services. Over the last couple of years, R T V has provided a bit of a rebate related to the state's zero fare program air funding, which is paid for R T V to have free fare to the entire system. The first year was August only, and then last summer was July and August. As you can see, the ECO Pass program costs have risen a little bit over time, and then they took a big drop in 2022. That's because R T V prices it two years in a row. So that 2022 year was reflecting the big drop in ridership that was experienced beginning in 2022 with the onset of COVID. And then you can see over time, the funding has transitioned from the county to the town of Lions. And so that's typically how we would fund new transportation demand management programs as the county would fund the first several years, and then we'd eventually transition financial responsibility over to the primary beneficiary. In my case, we the town asked the county for an extension of the county's funding related to expenses stemming from the 2013 floods. So the county agreed, and so that's why there was a number of years of county funding. Taxi voucher program, we launched this.
Questions as we go, any, Jerry?
That would be helpful. Yeah, yeah. So I just like to clarify a couple of things, and I appreciate you stopping after each program because I have a few questions for each one. So I just want to be clear here that in 2022 and 2023, the town of Lions was responsible for $10,000 approximately, right? For this program. And it sounds to me, based on the admin report, that maybe we have between 90 and 100 riders a year. Is that right? Because I was looking for that answer too. And so what is the cost to each resident for the ECO Pass?
So the town contracts with R T D for the program, and for 2022 and 2023, that was about $11,000. And then I believe the town also charges a $15.
It was 40.
Forty or $50.
It came on there tonight. Okay.
The town also charges a feed for residents to have their ECO Pass each year to help break the town's costs. And I believe the town offers a discount for seniors and now users relevant since students are all free until that R T D, or at least the next year.
So I guess I'd be curious, then, I don't know if maybe Ted Administrator Simonson knows this answer. How much are we able to subsidize that budget with ridership, with ridership fees?
Oh, is it $40 per hundred person? That doesn't sound so good. Not quite have.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
So the way R T D prices their ECO Pass programs now is based on utilization. And so the only thing that influences how much the town alliance contract with R T D costs is how much the town lines ECO pass holders ride our system. So the taxi voucher program. So this was launched in April 2020 to provide essential service between Lions and Boulder, Lions and Longmont. As you've mentioned, in April 2020, R T D suspended the now former Y route, which cut off Lions transportation link to Boulder. And so the county and the town have been talking about some kind of taxi voucher program to provide midday service before the pandemic hit. And then with the onset of pandemic and the suspension of the Y route, we kind of hurried up that process and launched a taxi voucher program to provide all service between Lions and the outside of communities. So the town contracts with Z Trips. Z Trips provides a voucher for up to $45 of travel one way, which gets you to about South Boulder and pretty much all of Long Run. And then Boulder County and R T D have reversed the town alliance for its costs. And our average cost per trip has been about $39 since the trip began, or since the service began. And then over the past several years, so we saw for a couple of years a growth in usage. And then when we launched the Lions Flyer, that's in 2022, the graph, you can see a big drop in ridership. And that's because a lot of folks who were using the Taxi Voucher Program switched to riding Lions Flyer had been furious, which is exactly what they would have expected of them.
This has really been effective for us, yeah.
So a quick breakdown of the funding for the first year. So lower, and then in 2021 and 2022, the county and R T D split the costs roughly to 50/50. And then in 2023, again, with that drop in usage related to the full, the first full year of the Lions Flyer, that was how it was responsible for that cost.
And and is this taxi voucher program a program that we intend to continue now that we have the flyer?
So the, right now, the Lions Flyer only runs during the AM and PM rush hour, and the taxi voucher is not available for trips between Lions and Boulder during the AM and PM rush hour because of one people on Lions Flyer. And so the taxi vouchers are for early morning, midday, and then evening travel to Boulder, and then all day travel to Longmont where there's not another option.
So folks that want, need to go to Longmont really use this program a lot. And even we have students that take it every day for school too.
So how does somebody get a voucher?
You come in and just ask for them. And if you're a part of the senior program, I mean, we work over with our Walt Self liaison. They give them out for us as well. But we have people who come and get, you know, 20 vouchers at a time to get through the week. And it's, we found that the program being funded this way is, you know, half the cost of what RTV was when we had that route. But we're able to give people one-on-one individualized hours of service. So it's worked really well. And for people who need to go to like just a doctor's appointment and don't want to stay all day, it's really ideal. But we have people using it for work, school, appointments. But I think the big thing here is being able to go to Longmont.
So it's really designed to fill in the gaps of when and where the Lions Flyer is providing service. So Lions Flyer. So this was launched by the county in summer of 2022 to replace the former Y. Throughout the pandemic, we had some inklings from R T D that they were not going to be restoring the Y route. And then I believe in spring of 2022, that became more official that they were not going to be bringing their Y back. So we launched the Lions Flyer with pretty similar service and number of trips to the Y route back in 2019. There's three daily round trips Monday through Friday. We have been contracting with the emergency services to provide the service. And then through the end of 2023, it's been co-funded by the county and R T D. And then we have some federal transit administration funding kicking and starting in 2024. So on the right is just a quick graph of our monthly boardings. Which are showing the funding split. And then also in 2023, we had a little bit of funding from the state for the Zero Fare Campaign, which allowed us to add a midday trip for July and August. And so that is a program that we expect the state to continue funding, but they're working on that in this legislative session. So we can't count on it. For the first couple of years, they've been doing it on a year by year basis. But I think there's a chance that in this legislative session, they might renew it for multiple years until allowing them to cease to have a little bit more certainty in planning for it.
And it was very successful.
I understand.
Yeah, so the the trips, I wouldn't, the midday trips, we did have some ridership. I wouldn't say it was quite the level of the AM and PM ridership. But it did provide additional options for travel during the midday for folks.
Can we go back to the previous slide? So there's a trend there of gradually decreasing ridership from August through December. Which is a little bit disconcerting because you had expected to go up. I mean, I understand why you're low in Y. Yeah, no one's, kids aren't going to school. There's other ways to get to work, etc. So I, I've, I've, I've taken it for 10 years. And and I can say one thing, the R T D was very good about something. They picked everybody up in Lions, but then when they got into Boulder, they did drop off only. The Boulder County one doesn't do that. They do pick up all along Broadway. And so it's almost double the amount of town time to get to the Pearl Street Mall. And I gotta be honest, why is Stop Taking That?
So we had a couple of different project managers. There's been some staff turnover at VIA, and we worked through that where they're not supposed to be picking up within Boulder going southbound.
Yeah.
Northbound leaving Boulder, it's a little harder for them to police because if somebody gets on the bus and then wants to get off, they're not going to prohibit that.
Yeah, sure.
But we have been working with VIA to try to move them in a direction where they're not providing local service within the city.
Okay, okay, great. Because I thought, I mean, she, first of all, the bus lady is extremely much, she brings you cupcakes on your birthday. You can't eat that. But it did slow it down to the point where it's like, I got scared. There's not going to be enough people to do this at this point. But then the pandemic changed everything. And it's hard. Okay, thanks.
Our, our one challenge compared to the former Y route is that the Y was always faster than the skip within Boulder, but you had to pay for each one. If the Lions Flyer being bare free, not only is it faster if you can get on the bus in Boulder, but it's also free, whereas the skip is not. And so that's kind of an added challenge for us to try to face and prevent the service within Boulder.
Oh, I see.
It's, I didn't think of an ongoing struggle, but the, you know, the motivation for the person is if they can get on the bus, it's free, better for them in both regards. But from Lions' community perspective, it obviously slows it down. Okay.
But the driver is supposed to.
Well, the driver is not supposed to pick up folks within Boulder going southbound.
Yes, she was doing that. Yeah.
It's something we're working with.
But she was trying to increase the ridership, I could tell. And because she would stop and ask everybody, I gotta get to work.
Um, I have a question just about that midday route. So that was literally July and August midday. Are you planning on doing that again next summer?
Um, if the state renews the funding and offers that program again, I think we'll certainly take a hard look at that. But without, until the state creates the funding for it, I can't say for certain.
Right. And at this point in time, the town of Lions isn't paying anything towards this Lions Flyer except with your taxes.
Correct.
Well, indirectly, but yeah.
Pay for it. Yeah, we pay for it.
Yeah, we pay for it. Boulder County, kind of in place originally funded by ARPA.
Yep. The town of Lions budget is not going towards us. Correct. Thank you.
A little bit about the county's strategic transit plan. So we received Dr. Cog Tipp grants. That's the same regional source of funding that Lions has had a number of projects awarded for in recent years. Most notably, the Broadway project under construction right now. So we have funding to do a countywide transit plan. We'll be starting that a little bit later in 2024 and I'll go through the end of 2025. Really, the vision for our transit plan is we know R T D is going to provide a certain level of transit service in Boulder County. They've adopted a system optimization plan that outlines how much service they're going to provide on which routes through 2027. That's kind of their short to midterm plan. And we know from the Boulder County Transportation Master Plan, the City of Boulder Transportation Master Plan, Longmont Multi-Mile Transition Plan, all of our community plans. But we want more transit service in our communities than R T D is going to be able to provide or have drivers money or capacity to provide. And so our transit plan, so we intended to look at what is R T D providing? What are they going to be able to provide? What do our communities want? And what is that gap? How do we provide it? How do we pay for it? And how do we build? So that's in a nutshell, the scope of our transit plan. So that will cover the Empire County, includes both the regional service and local service. I can't really speak to exactly what the outcomes are, but we, we want a detailed financial implementation plan that's going to speak to how do we broadly, how do we get the level of transit service that we want in our community? And what do we need to do between here and getting to make that a reality?
Any questions?
Last topic is the 2024 legislative session. Obviously, this kicked off just last week. There are a number of transportation-related bills, including at least one that would look at restructuring the R T D board. And another, I think it's a separate bill, that would look at providing more state funding to R T D, but on the condition that the local service councils, which are made up of the local communities, have a greater say in how R T D allocates its resources. So right now, R T D does all of its service planning at the district-wide level, and while local communities have input, we don't have any direct control over that process. But reading the political tea leaves, it sounds like if the state is going to provide R T D funding, that R T D would need to allocate that funding based on direction and control by the local communities, which would be fairly large break from how that's implemented right now.
Interesting.
I can't predict where any of those bills may or may not go, but that's something that the county will be following closely in the legislative session.
Do you know who's introducing those bills?
I know Senator Winter is involved in a number of them, and I don't know the specifics of who is sponsoring all of them.
Okay.
I couldn't find that out.
We can find out. Thank you. Carrie's long term. And I don't know where the exact details, but I believe the state with R T D is planning to do some kind of a rail up to Fort Collins. How will you participate in that?
So Commissioner Levy, one of the three county commissioners, she's on the Board of Directors for the Front Range Passenger Rail Research. So that's the biggest nexus of the county. And then we are, as staff, we're not as involved in the front range passenger rail, but we are involved in R T D's Northwest Rail. So predating the state's effort, there's the R T D project that would extend commuter road from west side to Boulder and then to Longmont. And what we're interested in is how the front range passenger rail might help bring that to fruition. Because there's a significant funding gap between what that project would cost and what R T D has. And so if the state comes in with funding to help make that happen, then Northwest Rail might be able to benefit from the state's efforts on Front Range Rail. Trying to foresee that. I know the, the state is looking at some kind of front range wide tax. They'll have to go to the voters to fund that effort. And it's a possibility that that'll go to the ballot this November, but it's also a possibility that they're not going to be quite ready to bring a tax measure to the rest of this.
And I've also heard some, some discussion about instead of a tax stadium fee that may or may not have legs, but sporting event stadium fee per ticket.
Heard, okay, it's one. And then the other big funding source is, so the state was recently accepted into getting the name of their foot and tracks kind of feeder funding program. And so being in the door with that funding allows the state to compete for a whole lot more funding from believes the bipartisan infrastructure law a couple of years ago. And so the front range passenger rail is, is not likely to happen without a significant fusion of funding from the federal rail administration. But we're, we're in the door, so it's clear that first of all, turtle to be able to access more of that. turtle to be able to access more of that funding.
Thank you. Other questions? Really appreciate you coming out tonight for this update.
Thank you very much. It was nice of you to throw it out.
It's on zero degrees today.
Yeah, right. Okay. So will, um, any other information you guys want us to bring back?
I think it's just important to note, I mean, because I, I did ride it a lot. I rode for almost ten years. And, and some of us could afford to drive, but there was a lot of people on that bus that could not afford to drive. And so even if it's not a huge ridership, there's some people that would be very debilitated if I went.
Well, thank you. Okay, well, um, we'll move on to the Summit Housing up, update with some milestone information. Who's gonna take that?
Here's a staff intro by Aaron, and then, um, virtually we have Paul Caps and Austin Richardson from Summit Housing. Sure, tech, thank you.
So to give the update from the staff report, I mean, trying to collect what we were looking to find out about. Um, but there might be a little more. We'll let Paul and Austin talk about who's moved in, things like that. I don't have the housing statistics as much as the construction utilities. I did include in the packet for you the actual punch list, which shows the items that their contractors are now working on to get accomplished between the holidays, the weather, people being out of town. Um, I haven't checked. They haven't called to say, oh, we have a bunch of these finished. Usually you try to get a good portion of them before calling me out to check each one. So really the update is when they get further along on those, we'll be going to inspect those last lines. I then went on to include information about something that seemed to be a big topic, the stream bank restoration. So I did try to go through the packet or go through the agreements and then the minutes and put them in this packet for you so you wouldn't have to read the forty pages of all the agreements and everything there. But it was also in there in case there were real questions of in context where this was for minutes, where this was in the meetings. Online, I just wanted to start with the beginning with the agreements and that item sixteen, Stream Bank Restoration, which talks specifically about trying to restore the stream bank behind those properties, five oh five and five oh six Carter Court. We did have a map up previously, but there's questions, I can probably try to pull that up if you're not familiar with where that is. Um, then going on to the Second Amendment, what was the, with Summit? Was the Fourth Amendment, the first couple of agreement and amendment were with the previous property owner. But I started with where the Summit Housing Development or the Lyons Valley Town Homes LC got involved. And the Second Amendment with them was again, discussion about this stream bank. Was there anything that could be done? You might have seen in the minutes how the talk was, it is a pricey project and would be a real problem for the affordable housing aspect of this. Um, so again, it was talked about what could be done. You'll see the mention there of putting in a fence. And most of this I brought up is what you can see from its staff really looked like that's a temporary fence to be done until the stream bank mitigation could be accomplished. Throughout the amendments and the discussion, we've seen the stream bank mitigation was going to be a project. The fence was not something that was going to go in. In place of that, it was a temporary until the stream bank mitigation could be done. At least that was staff's understanding. Again, then just presenting how back last March, we came with the information about the stream bank. It was on the March twenty-third. I didn't find it till after the packet, but staff, I presented that there was an opportunity for funding for the stream bank mitigation. We were told to move forward. Came again talking about the grants that were offered with CWCB and Left Hand Conservancy. And both of those staff was able to apply for the grants for the design on, accept the award for, I think last time we accepted the second one, I know we were told CWCB accept that. The grant from Left Hand had the concern of the twenty-seven thousand being taken back if it wasn't done, the construction, but was still told to move forward. So I really just wanted to get everything together to see the chain of events that looked like we should still be moving forward with that stream bank mitigation from staff's understanding. Um, on that, not in here, there could be some discussion then about the items that need to be done. Again, with that fence needing to be put in. Now we've come to a point where the ground is frozen. That's gonna be one of the items on their punch list that is going to take time. It's going to potentially, let's say, May, I don't know for sure, but you could see that being a concern. Um, so with us moving forward, we have some bids. We're looking at accepting a design for that, trying to get that moving forward with the hopes of going forward with construction in the fall, say, October. Do we want to talk to Lyons Valley Town Homes or Summit Housing about the option of, okay, we've been without the fence for umpteen years? Do they go ahead and, and contribute to the stream bank restoration construction? And we just continued, there is currently a silt fence, which is for stormwater protection back there. Um, potentially they could add a smaller construction orange plastic fence. Again, those aren't something solid that if somebody wants to run through, but could be a cheaper additional protection barrier, or at least something that stands out noticeable. Hey, you can't just easily walk right off. Um, so that's something that could be discussed tonight if there was a desire to see if they could, it would allow them to just write a check to contribute to that, not have to go through the process of getting a company to do the fence and that part of the project. That was part up for discussion. And the last part in mind was then the update on the funds that were offered back to Summit. Um, that's included in the packet, the portion of the amendment that talks about how the town was going to be giving them the hundred and fifty thousand from the American Rescue Plan funds for the water sewer infrastructure that they were doing. Again, they received the first fifty thousand installment. The second fifty thousand was to be done when the public utilities were finished. Those, in order to keep the project moving, we did allow them to keep going with the houses so people could move in, and some of the public improvements are on that punch list. So we want the punch list finished. And then the third tranche or portion of that would come when they presented the costs from this engineering new record construction cross index. I'm not familiar with it, but it is an item out there that's con Lyons Valley Town Homes to give us the information showing how much more it costs from when they originally planned it, which is why we put out this assistance to them. Uh, we wanna call the hundred and fifty thousand that was offered to them. And that was really all I had. If there were questions for me.
I, I have a question, but I wanna see if anybody else does.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, um, the property and the lots. So you mentioned five oh five and five oh six Carter Court earlier. So that's the first cul-de-sac off of Carter Drive, correct? Those are the two homes towards the back, and we have that community garden in the middle there, right? There's an area that could be, depending on how this gets graded down. Okay, and so those lots, so I'm talking about lots forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-five. Those are all Lyons Valley Town Home lots?
No. Only five, I don't know the property numbers offhand, but I'll pull it up. Five oh five and five oh six Carter Court are the Town of Lyons property. Oh, sorry, I thought it was in property. Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, just trying to understand what, which lots are behind those properties. I'm trying to understand what those lots are. I'm trying to determine what are the lots that are that like, the lines like townhomes are.
Developed and they're ours.
Both of those are ours. Behind five oh five and five oh six.
Yeah, on.
On five oh five.
So you can see up there, right?
Five oh five.
Five oh five, five oh six. This is the flip edge. You're looking at a shadow in there. And so as you go down, then there is a summit between Lyons Valley Town Home on this property. You can see there's a slight border there. Another map shows that further to the south. And so we don't yet know for sure how much there's gonna need to be on this corner, if any, of Lyons Valley Town Home's property. But again, I included in the agreement that section sixteen talks about how some Lyons Valley Town Home will work with the town. What we need to do, agreements to allow the construction, and their concern was the cost, but I think they would be happy to have that mitigated too, so it's not there. The other property is the next one over off of Carter Drive. Comes back here, you can see again, this slight edge could potentially need something right across the edge corner. So we include those two lots more from a construction access. Then the other, this other parcel across the way is also a town parcel. So this large one is town property. And again, you have the two from the development that are town property and these two little corner edges.
Okay, I'm still confused because on the checklist, on the punch list, it talks about lots thirty-nine and forty that need a fence. Those are, those thirty-nine and forty. Those are thirty-nine.
Yep.
So did you not just say that those were Town of Lyons?
Yeah.
Yes.
But they agreed to fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys know. Okay. And so the other ones that are mentioned in the, um, resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, Article sixteen, there was also mention of lots thirty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-five. So, so those are the ones beside them then that you just showed us?
What was the mention of those?
That was the one where the developer shall restore a stream bank along length of the property, and it mentions lots forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-five. And then Rusty Snow says we have agreed to fence it. So I'm just trying to clarify here. Yeah.
Right, we'd have to know what from the minutes and from the agreement, where again, that was the verbal agreement for a fence. Forty, thirty-nine, here we can see for sure. These are lot numbers, so that will help. They can put down in. So this is.
Lot thirty-nine. It's down at the bottom, legal description.
Lot thirty-eight?
Yeah.
I looked at mention lot thirty-seven, there isn't anything that would deal with the fence there, but lot thirty-six. Potentially if they said, did you say lot thirty-five was in it?
Yeah.
So those are all the ones that border our property. I don't see thirty-five needing anything.
Okay.
I'd say thirty-six is the one we might cross this little corner. It all depends on the reality of this map too, what's on the ground. This looks like there will be some on this edge and then our two parcels.
Okay. So yeah, I guess I was just confused as to why only lots thirty-nine and forty were on the punch list. And I guess maybe it's because thirty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-five don't need one.
We don't have those. We don't have that right now.
Right, through just discussions, yeah, most of it being verbal, all of these agreements and amendments weren't pulled up during the construction talk. And so my understanding was it was these two. Maybe the Board of Trustees did want it to contain slightly more across. As you can see, I don't know what, we're talking about twenty feet out of the entire hundred and fifty feet.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, it was not an amendment that was added, but it was failed.
Oh, right, okay, there was one, right. If you look in there, you'll see where it's proposed.
It failed six one.
It failed.
Okay.
So, so it was, it is in there, yes, definitely go that entire length, but it was never.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
So clarify.
Thank you, Jesse. I'll see. There's things that will remain next.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My question is, it really doesn't specify what kind of a fence.
Right.
So really what we're talking about is probably something fairly temporary until the stream restoration is done. Is that how I understand the intent?
Um, we had asked for a fence that would be a chain link fence. Again, on this construction, not having any specifics in there, um, just recently, but they're probably up for negotiation. Lyons Valley Town Homes could come and say what they understood the fence to be. Um, what may be asking us what we would like to see versus what they can do. Um, the recent talks, just again, with the contractor, which is not directly to Lyons Valley Town Home, was a chain link fence. Uh, I believe like a six-thea standard chain link fence, like you see currently around the park there.
And that was my under, having been in these discussions, that was my understanding because the purpose of the fence is for safety.
Yeah, yeah.
And so an orange, a flimsy orange construction fence isn't gonna get us there. Um, the question I have is on the punch list on item thirty-two. I think there might have been some words left off, so I just wanna make sure I understand. Erosion control along stream repaired and to remain. Can you explain what that means?
There's a road, there's fencing, there's black silt fence, if you've seen it in places that use for erosion control. And in places that have been damaged, fallen over during some of the recent excavation, moving the rocks around. So before they left for it being finished, that needs to remain usually for a year until everything has been revegetated. So that requested just to make sure that that stormwater control silt fence is in good condition before they leave.
Okay, and then who removes it after a year?
Their contractor, they have coming to take care of them.
Okay. Other question? Okay, um, and so I think let's turn it over to Mr. Caps. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Herr Rogan and Board of Trustees. Thank you for having us. I think we are at the end of, or close to the end of this long journey in Lyons. Um, i- it's nice to have people living, uh, on our property and, uh, you know, close to completion here. It's been a, it's been a long process. Um, Austin and I have only been involved in it for a little less than three years. I know it was going on quite a bit before that, but, uh, at the end of the day, we're, uh, we're about to wrap this up. Um, you know, it's gonna take a little while longer, but for the most part, we'll be fully occupied shortly. We hope to have everything leased by the end of this month. Uh, Victoria has been participating in, uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday calls with us uh, over the last couple of months, just to kind of update traffic, um, leasing, occupation, occupied units and things like that. Uh, so I'd like to just summarize where we are today. Uh, we have twenty-two occupied units out of forty. Uh, we have three approved applications, uh, that should be occupied. We hope this week, which would put us to twenty-five. We have eleven additional, um, applicants that we are working right now. And, and let me back up one second. Victoria, I think, has seen kind of how these affordable housing projects work from an application standpoint. Uh, it's not easy. It's not like negotiating with someone, could I lease this? Sign a traditional lease and move on. We have a significant amount of due diligence to do on each applicant, uh, income verifications and things like that. Uh, that is not our choice. That is CHAFPA and IRS Section forty-two rules and regs that we have to comply with. Uh, so i- it's a process. It's, it's not quick and it's not painless, but it's a process. I think at the end of the day, we'll have, um, forty units of housing that the, the Town of Lyons can be proud of for a very long time. It's a beautiful project, um, and, um, it's very unique. You will not find many, uh, single-family homes in, uh, in tax credit, uh, projects in the country. Uh, I know of a couple of projects, that's it. I'm sure there are more that I'm not aware of, but it, it's a rare occasion. So you'll, you'll have, um, you'll have one of the few, and, and hopefully, again, you can be proud of it. There was a question that one of the trustees inquired about, uh, from our manager about, um, how the applicants and the people moving in, uh, were classified in priority. Uh, I'll tell you that nine of the occupied units currently are from Priority One and Priority Two tenants. In other words, people in Lyons or working in Lyons, living in Lyons during the flood are impacted. We have seven additional that are Priority Three that live and work in Lyons. Uh, of the additional, uh, eleven applicants, one is a Priority One applicant and ten are Priority Three applicants. So there's local flavor everywhere. I don't think. There's local flavor everywhere, I don't think we have many, if any, uh, from out of town, out of the area. Uh, other than a couple of people that have moved back to to Lyons that have history there. Um, so that's where we are, I, we expect um. Probably five or six more applicants to come in this week that we've talked with. Um, I think if we had to put a number on it today, and and I can't say for sure until we get the income verifications back. Uh, I think that uh, we probably have five more to rent, something like that. So if any of you know someone looking for housing and want to be in Lyons, this would be a great opportunity for someone uh, to do this. And and I've I've mentioned this to Victoria and I'll bring it up one more time. I I mentioned the income verification. You have to make sixty percent or less of the area median income to qualify to live there. Again, that has to be verified. The interesting thing in the tax credit world. The initial move-ins, as long as they don't change the building that they are in. Do not have to, well, they have to requalify, re. Recertify income every year, however, if they are over income and out years. They are eligible to remain in their unit. Once that turns over and it becomes a second lease, that income has to be qualified. Every single year, so if they're over income, they would have to move out. But the first round through, the first forty tenants. Can make eight million dollars next year, year after, down the road, whatever, they still are eligible to live at our property. Uh, so that's a real advantage. Um, in in today's time, because the incomes are are really very tight, we have had. I I don't know the number twenty. Or more people that have applied that are over income and were not eligible to live there, again, not our call at all. It's simply, we have to verify that income level, so. All of the uh, all of the units, we have this certificate of occupancy on, we are working. Quickly to lease them as soon as we possibly can, again, we hope to have them occupied, we are working with some uh. Potential tenants and some existing people that have signed leases. That had to give thirty days notice or something to their current residents, uh, we are. We are, we have gotten them to sign a lease, they're occupied in the unit, but they're not paying rent. Until they move in in thirty days or a little inside that thirty days period, so we're giving them grace period where we know and they know they have a place to move. Um, so we're working again with everyone we possibly can uh, to smooth the transition. Um, so that's kind of the status of the problem, I ask Austin to be here. Uh, because he kind of runs construction for us and is a little more knowledgeable than I am about the construction aspect. Austin and um, uh, has been again, involved from day one. Um, so any questions, any concerns? Oh, before before I turn it over to questions, let me, let me throw something out. Uh, two years ago. The former mayor Pro Tem Browning. Had a really, really good idea, once we discussed some additional financial um, consideration from the town. He did not want the cost of construction to come down without the town participating in it. So he came up with the index that we talked, that Aaron mentioned a minute ago, the E and R uh, index, uh, the the. The kind of the premise was if uh, if construction costs decrease, whatever that percentage is, that additional fifty thousand dollars would be decreased by that amount. Um, unfortunately for all of us, uh, since fourth quarter of two thousand twenty one or third quarter two thousand twenty one. And uh, the end of the year this year, that E and R index has gone up about seventeen and a half percent. I don't have the exact indices that Mayor Pro Tem Browning was referencing, but I do have uh, of of all of them. That's about the average that I've seen, it's up about seventeen, construction cost up about seventeen and a half percent over the last two years. Uh, my checkbook can also verify that that is uh, it at least a fairly accurate number. Um, so. Cost. Cost a lot more than we thought uh, to complete this project. Uh, I would think from the initial. Austin, you may want to opine on this, but from the initial consideration four or five years ago. We're probably up five million dollars in that range from what we thought this project would cost. Um, so um, i- it's been. It's been a slow, painful process, but we're, we're close to the end of it at this time, at this time. Um, Mayor Rogan, uh, any trustees, questions, comments, anything I need to clarify for you?
Questions for Mr. Capps, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Mr. Capps, and um, thank you for your time and your energy and your dedication to this project, I also want to thank you for. Um, agreeing to have our town administrator Simonson join the last few meetings these last few months, thank you also for adding staff. To help process these applications. Um, you know, I've been following the application process pretty closely as liaison with the Housing Human Services Commission. We've been working with these applicants since spring of last year, as you know. Um, I have a question regarding income verification, I guess. I'm having trouble understanding um, why. Income is being verified at the very last second in a lot of these cases. Is that a tougher regulation that you need to have the latest snapshot the day they're signing the lease, or is there a way to have that verified ahead of time?
It it, there is a way to have it verified, but it has to be inside a hundred and twenty days, we have to have.
Sure.
Uh, we have to have that data inside a hundred and twenty days and uh, you know, kind of the. You and I've talked about the the. The painful process that we've experienced since April uh, in a couple of conversations. Um, did we handle it right? No, we did not, we could have handled it better. Um, but you know, construction delays kept happening throughout this process, things get drug out, drug out, drug out. And um, so we tend to wait until we know we have. Uh, units that are ready to occupy uh, before. The final verification is concerned, we normally get inside sixty days on that. So.
So. So as of today, where um, all the units are able to be occupied, you've received certificates of occupancy for all the units.
Right.
How far in advance are you able to verify the income ahead of this signing of the lease?
We can verify the income from a hundred and twenty days in, all right? Has to be dated on inside a hundred and twenty days. However, we have had multiple consider, multiple situations through this process. Uh, where potential tenants or applicants. Uh, income has changed. Close to the, or we've gotten down to the wire where we're finally verifying some things and. Well, I didn't know I was supposed to report this ten ninety nine income and, oh, I got another job. In between when we made application and and today, so that's kind of starts that clock ticking again, and we have to go through and and verify everything. All over again. Um, so if you do it too far, you've got to do it too far in advance, it has to be inside a hundred and twenty days. If you do it too far in advance, sometimes in in several cases, we've had to go back and redo it, so we normally will wait. Till inside that sixty day window uh, to do it.
Sure.
Get the process completed, it's not easy. Um, you know, we've, we've.
I I can. I can testify to that.
Bank statements and uh, um, we we've had, we've had employers. Don't not understand how to do the the income verification forms, what else should be included, excluded, we've had multiple corrections. Uh, so it it's never easy, this has been a little bit more difficult than the norm.
Sure, no, I understand, and so just one last question, so with the final eighteen units that are going to be occupied, hopefully by the end of the month. Um, oh, there is, um, how far in advance will you be able to verify their income before they sign the lease? I just want to make sure that people at least have like a buffer, maybe a week, for example, I don't know, I just feel like it's been very stressful for a lot of applicants finding out. The day of that they're finally, um, you know, they're finally approved. When it comes to income verification and they're signing their lease like the next minute, meanwhile, they're having to. Plan for a moving truck and 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 a move and people to help them, I mean, it's just been really stressful from the beginning to end.
And that's why we're working with people and giving them that that buffer time, I told Victoria several months ago, you know, we're. We want to make sure we get this project occupied properly. Uh, and in compliance, and we understand there's notice involved. Uh, so needing that, we're eating that rent, we're going ahead and moving in tenants to be occupied. But we're not charging them rent till they're ready to move in, you know, and giving them thirty days. The process can be done. In less than a week. If everything is in order, if if the prospective tenant has the information we need. And.
Right.
Uh, we go through. Multiple layers of compliance verification. We will have our majors look at the applicant package uh, and to the best of their knowledge. Uh, try to pre-qualify, then we send it to a regional manager, they'll eyeball it and do the same thing. Then we send it to our, our third party uh, compliance um. Company that does this for us through our property management software, once we get their approval, it goes to our internal compliance manager. For their approval, and then it goes one more step to a a a third party consultant that we have for initial move-ins. And then they're the final word. Uh, that third party consultant used to run compliance for CHAFA, so. We go kind of a step above and beyond, but the reason we do that is if we move in. And we have had situations like this, if we move in a tenant that's over income, we lose tax credits on that unit. And the tax credit recapture process through the IRS that can, that can get in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, so.
Okay, I. Thank you, I want to, I want to make sure that we can hear from Austin before we need to move on to our next workshop agenda items, so um, so I'm sorry to cut you off, but I want to. Make sure that we have enough time to hear from Austin.
Austin, from a construction standpoint, anything you need to add?
No, the only thing um. I will add is that all the units um, as stated are completed with COs. We have the four multifamily buildings that uh, still remain to have landscaping done. And we have the the punch list item from. Um, Aaron on site work to repair, most of the stuff is fairly quick to do, even the landscaping is as well. Um, that will be completed. As soon as weather permits. Um, so if. You know, one, once weather is good, we can uh, start working on that, the landscaping. Uh, but it might take a couple of months to to get that uh, accomplished, but otherwise, as far as units go and residents moving in. Um, everything is in place.
Great, are there questions for Austin? Or additional questions for Mr. Capps? Again, uh, Mr. Capps, I'm sorry to have cut you off, I just wanted to make sure that um, we had. Time for Austin, so we have a, just a couple of minutes, if there's anything else you'd like to add.
I would like to add that this is the third or fourth time I've appeared before the board, and this is the fewest number of questions I've ever had, so thank you very much.
Well, I think. I think the previous boards um, did a great job of. Doing the really tough work on our ed and staff, of course. Um, and making this project a reality, and it, you're right, it is a beautiful, beautiful project. And I I personally love showing it to people, I love showing it to my cohort of elected people and um. And other folks, I think it's a great example of what housing affordability can look like and feel like, and so. I thank you and your team for your hard work in making this all a reality, and I know we're we're so close to the finish line, we're so close. And um, look forward to having an official. Finish line celebration.
Right.
When the weather's better.
I think uh, Victoria and I discussed it, I think we're looking April to have a grand opening, uh, hopefully the weather will turn. Um, and uh, we look forward to having a big celebration and uh, with with all of you and everybody in the town, so.
Well, thank you, thank you again.
To clarify, are there um, are there discussion or decision points you're looking for tonight during general business? From a staff perspective?
Only I caught the fence.
Yeah, I want to talk about the fence, so it'll be the fence, so you're welcome to join us again later or. I'll call you tomorrow.
Just, just give me a call tomorrow and let me know what we need to do, we know about the fence, uh, we're working on that, again, we're working with Aaron. Uh, and our contractor to knock out the punch list items and uh, get this wrapped up.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it, have a great evening.
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate being here.
Thank you, board, have a good day.
Thank you, Austin, okay, so let's move on, Melody Mascherinas, did I say this?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay, welcome, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, and I believe you have a brief presentation.
Yeah.
And a colleague.
Yeah, this is Jason King, Attorney General's Office.
Hello, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having us.
I, I was actually gonna pull it up online, I thought I had it ready to share here, but it's not, here it is. Share, let's see if I can get this to share, okay. Sent in an email, so I need to.
It's in the agenda.
Yes, in the workshops.
Yeah.
But really, we'll boost yourselves with. Public health, the environment, and a work on natural resource damages.
Appreciate it, Jason King with the Colorado Attorney General's Office, uh, been working on this. Same brain spill rollover site uh, since it happened.
Thank you, I have to say, while Victoria's getting that up, I um, I got a call. From Attorney General Wiser and um. I had no idea why he was calling me. So gave me a little bit of a start, but um, but it was a, it was a great, a great call to have to say, hey, we. We have a settlement, now we need to talk about what's next, so. We're excited.
We didn't know about that. And we also have Laura Arpauleta. She's with the US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Oh, great, just.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
So again, I'm Melody Mascherinas and I've worked with Jason, we worked on putting SPP together, it's on our website. And. Oh, I'm sorry, the solicitation for project proposal, and um, so we've been working on that together, and so this is. Like the formal announcement of that, and so I'll let Jason take the first few slides, and then I have some slides to just basically talk about timeline.
Sure.
Terrific.
So we we have about fifteen slides in the deck here, um, we'll tag team it. Uh, I'll kick it off, talking about uh, background of the spill. Um, injuries that were, uh, the resources that were injured and the assessment that we had done. Um, as well as the settlement that we had with the responsible party, the trucking company. Um, then I'll cover some of the goals of the federal statute and uh, state guidance. On use of the funds, the recovered funds, as well as some of the constraints uh, that we have. Um, then I'll hand it off to Melody, she will talk about the solicitation for project proposals, SPP, I'll apologize in advance, we speak in a lot of acronyms. Just stop me if I say one and I don't, I don't spell it out. Um, and she'll walk you through the important uh, dates and deadlines and that. If we stick to a minute of slide, we might have some time for Q and A at the end. Um, the SPP document is available now on CDPH's website, and that link will be in one of the slides.
Perfect.
Uh, so background on the spill, this this happened in uh, April of twenty twenty one. Uh, there was a gasoline tanker truck heading north on uh, highway thirty six. Um, it's going a little too fast, I think the sharp left-hand bend wound up in the ditch just near the uh, the Apple Valley Bridge. And uh, released about two thousand gallons of gasoline um, through a culvert into nursing brain. Um, we believe that was a. Large pulse that moved through rather quickly and had a a acute toxic effect on the fish, so there was, there was an immediate fish kill. Um, over eight hundred fish were collected um, by Colorado Parks and Wildlife, CPW, uh, as well as some members of the public. So uh. EPA, US EPA Region Eight, uh, they responded uh, within a matter of hours, they were first on site, uh, they deployed some booms to catch that uh, that uh, petroleum product coming into the river. Um, they also did some initial sampling. Um, they also did some initial sampling of the water and and the sediment where the the gasoline uh would have settled. Um, and then they also cleaned up the accident area where there was some petroleum product in the soils. Um, after that, uh CPW came in and did more extensive uh studies. So they did uh sampling over about a year's period at five different sites. They'll uh show up on a slide coming up here. Um, sampling fish, um, bentic macro invertebrate invertebrates BMI, so green fly fishermen, that's the names, the aquatic bugs. Um, as well as the algae that the bugs eat. So we uh took that data from those studies, um, and that informed the natural resource damage assessment that was performed by our consultant apped resource or apped associates. Uh, and they came up with a two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar uh natural resource damage claim under the Oil Pollution Act. Uh, we took that to the insurance company that was insuring the trucking company. Um, had a couple-week-long negotiation, one of the easier ones I've ever worked on, and they wound up paying the claim in full. So uh that was about a year ago, and since then, we've had some interest. So there's two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars now available um to be awarded. That was longer than a minute. Um, so some goals of the use of these funds that are recovered from natural resource damage claims. Um, so unlike other environmental violations where there's monetary penalties that then go, you know, usually to the general fund or the or the U.S. Treasury, these funds are really aimed at uh compensating the public for the injured injuries to the resources um as well as the lost use of the resources. So here, you know, the days that were lost of fishing um can be uh compensated for by using these funds. So they can only be used to restore, replace, or acquire the equivalent of the injured resources uh or to address those lost uses. And that that comes from federal statute and federal regulations, and it's also been adopted into state trustees' guidelines. Um, so that really is a a requirement, eligibility requirement for these projects. Um, they also need to be aimed at restoring public resources. Um, and so the the resources we're talking here that were injured are aquatic life, fish, BMI, um, and that algae, uh as well as the aquatic habitats. So think about everything that makes up that habitat, the water, the the sediment, the structure in the river. Um, and then as well, uh some terrestrial habitat in the riparian areas, so riparian vegetation. Next slide. Um, so this is the area that was studied. Um, kind of hard to see, but yeah, okay, so you you know your river there.
Yeah.
Um, the the spill happened at the top, right around that big bend. Um, and the sample sites proceed downstream, the first one being a couple hundred yards downstream of the spill. The next sample site was uh uh the River Church. And then the third was the Apple Valley Farmstead. Yep, and then Planet Bluegrass, and then last, uh Laverne Johnson Park.
Okay.
So those were all sample sites, but not all resources were sampled at each site. Um, again, it was for fish, uh BMIs and and for algae. Oh, actually, go back quick.
Okay.
So what uh CPW found and and Left Hand Watershed Center also helped out with the BMI uh sampling was that there there was a considerable injury. Um, in some places, there was as much as ninety percent loss of the resource uh closer to the spill site. Uh, the good news is that over the course of time and through the sampling, um, it appears that the river rebounded uh rather quickly. So um things came back to normal um within a matter of months for some of the sources. Um, so that's very good news for a river that's, you know, had had some hard times in the past. Yeah, okay, you know that.
So some examples of projects that have used N R D funds in the past, natural resource damage funds. Um, I was gonna talk about some of those and also the timeline of for the solicitation of project proposals. That's what the slides I'll be talking about. Uh, we in the past have used N R D funds for, as Jason mentioned, river restoration, riparian environments on mountain streams. We've acquired parcels um in the past with N R D funds in conservation easements, wetland expansion, trail enhancements, and various restoration projects have used been used with N R D funds. Eligible project offers, uh those are, those can be any public entities, municipalities, counties, state agencies applying to use the N R D funds, and they'd need a fifty percent match on those funds that they would be using the N R D funds. There also, they'd have to be nonprofit organizations, five oh one C threes, and environmentally focused. And you can have several offer, sorry, I have a hard time with that word sometimes, offers um offers get together and put back, put for forward a proposal. So this is the website Jason mentioned. Um, it's up on one of our pages, CDPH pages. You could easily Google CDPH, North Saint Brain N R D, and it will pop up. But that's the page that it's on, the solicitation for project proposal. And that has the offer information, timelines, and also the uh registration form and offer would need. And that that registration form I mentioned is on page five of the solicitation of project proposal. So these are some of the key dates. We'll go over in detail. Um, that registration form is needed by February fifteenth, and that's basically to let us know you're interested in putting forward a proposal. Uh, that would be needed by February fifteenth. And then after that, if you have any questions related to the project you're gonna propose, those would be needed to by March fifteenth, but you can submit those sooner sooner if you'd like. And then we'll get a response to you by April first. And we're gonna go through the rest of the dates. And finally, at the end of the year, this year, twenty twenty-four, we hope to have the proposals in front of the N R D trustees. That's the end of these key dates right here we're gonna talk about. So the registration form I mentioned is on page five of the solicitation of project proposal. And it basically says your interest in putting forth a project to the N R D trustees. That's due February fifteenth, and those registration forms should be sent to me. They can be mailed, um, emailed, faxed, whatever way you'd like to get that information to us. The written question deadline, like I mentioned, is um that could be with the offer registration form, and then we'd have the response to questions April first. Proposal submission deadline is May first. Um, the format for the proposal submission is in the solicitation of project proposal, and that's on our website also. It has the accessibility standards that um CDPH requires in addition to the format. There'll be initial screening and review from the work group, who will screen the initial proposals. And they'll also post the proposals for thirty days for public review. And that'll occur in May of twenty twenty-four. And they may require site visit, the working group. And so that would occur this upcoming summer, is what the trustee council also called the working group, would do the site visits. And a decision would be reached from the trustee council, and then that would be put forth to the N R D trustees. So a little bit, there's a trustee council, N R D trustee, that's a little confusing, but the council would put forth their recommendations to be N R D trustees. And that recommendation to the trustees would be in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four at a public meeting, um Phil Wiser and the other N R D trustees, and then state and federal trustees. So again, the key dates, this is the offer registration form, um that would be February fifteenth. Then any questions related to that, if you wanted to say this is the project we're proposing, um, would this qualify, something along those lines, that would be at the March fifteenth date. We need that question in by then, then the response to those questions in April. The proposal submission deadline is May first. Then there'll be initial screening, post um proposals for thirty days. Um, site visits in the summer of twenty twenty-four, a formal evaluation by the trustee council, and recommendations to the N R D trustees in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-four. And after that, the contract is awarded and for those to proceed. So after the trustees approve those proposals. And um I wanted to thank you for your time, and if and if there's any questions.
Yeah, thank you. I I have a couple of few, mind. Um, so can you tell us why private firms are not eligible to bid on work?
It's, but in my, I think because it's always just what it says in the statute, I think.
It's statute, it's gesture.
So.
Okay. Okay, and then um you mentioned some macro invertebrate studies that have been done.
See, going back to your question there, so uh public entities can hire private firms to represent them and put forth a proposal.
Okay.
That's very common.
Okay.
But the money needs to go to a a public entity or a five oh one C three.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
So I can follow up a little further from what's been done at the local level already.
Uh huh.
Um, and you guys might not be aware of this even. The um, the town has met with the Watershed Center. Um, I was trying to think, was Saint Brain Left Hand there?
No, I saw maybe not because they did some of the other study part and left it to watershed.
So after this incident, um, you know, this was very visible to our community and very impactful. And um I think this even maybe the previous board or that discussed how we um we had heard about this process, and we were told there was gonna be a fifty percent match.
Mm-hmm.
And most of the work needed to occur outside the town limits. So this the town limit, the only site that, none of Apple Valley is in the town limits.
Okay.
And so um, so the Watershed Center met with us and said, would you like to partner with us to potentially be an offerer on a project? And we said, yes, we'd like to be, you know, we'd like to be included on what you're proposing be done. But we don't have any money budgeted to do it because it's all outside the town limits.
Mm-hmm.
So um Deb Hummel, who was not able to be here tonight from the Left, or from the Watershed Center, we kind of brainstormed already some projects we might want to submit as part of this, and then they would do it as a private organization.
Okay.
But again, it's outside of the town limits, the projects are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Well, and that then we don't have the match either. They would have covered the match. So that's kind of what we've talked about at the staff level in regard to um submitting. And I just don't remember the timing on it. Is this board or the last one that said kind of gave us the nod that the town wouldn't be submitting on our own?
Um, I can't recall if it was this board or the last one, but I do remember the nod.
Yeah.
So so thank you for that context.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so did this, did you find, and you might not know the answer to this, um, that this changed the habitat to to the point where it comprised compromised the post-flood uh restoration?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that.
Mm-hmm.
The injuries that were uh observed were similar to other spills in other parts of the states.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they were immediate, they were acute, closer to the spill, but the more injury there was. Um, you know, the the injury from the flood was not just the impact of the aquatic life, but it was also to the the river system itself.
Yeah.
With the way the channels moved, and this gasoline going down the river didn't didn't affect that. I didn't hear any um any reports of any restoration projects being impacted by this.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
How about the plantings? We planted, you know, tens of thousands of willows.
Yeah.
Do you know if they were killed by the?
I I heard nothing about um acute impacts to riparian vegetation.
Mm-hmm.
So I think I think it bared well.
Um, and then is there a way for us to get the results of the macro invertebrate studies, to see those results? I know are, okay.
Yeah, so there's uh the document is called the Preliminary Estimated Injuries and Damages, P E I D. I have a acronym for it. Um, and I don't think that's posted on either of our websites, but uh I'm happy to email anybody a copy of that. That's a public document, public record.
That would be wonderful if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Okay. Um, in in our last couple of minutes, any other questions?
There's a hand up by Miss Archuleta.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Archuleta, please go ahead.
I think that would be.
If I had my hand up, I didn't mean to do that. I might have.
Oh, you know what? I think it's the cursor that's hovering over.
Discussion about the river.
Add about that last part of the discussion on the river that those questions? Any any other board members have questions and then we'll?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes. So based on your timeline, there won't be any restoration on that part of the river until twenty twenty-five, it looks like. Is that right? Like we're a year out, probably?
Yeah, the the money won't be awarded till fourth quarter twenty twenty-four. And then I'm sure there's a planning, designing, engineering phase, and then the contracting phase as well of that, so. You know, the way these things go, it might be twenty twenty-six before on-ground work starts. But it really just depends on how fast the proponents can work um with CDPH to do the contracting and get the design done.
But it might not be a project specifically what you're thinking. It could be several different projects. Like I said, it can be a conservation easement, it could be a trail restoration. There's lots of different things these funds could go towards in that in that area. It's just what proposals we get. And we did send the announcement of that we put is going into your local paper tomorrow. Susan was very helpful with that.
Good.
Um, we sent that to a group of people, the Left Hand Watershed, the um
Watershed Center?
Yes, all those people got that announcement along with the link to the SPP. This, they um, I sent that out earlier today.
Great. Thank you so much. Other questions?
Thank you. One last one. Can match be in kind?
Okay.
Great, great question.
One line was gonna be on the match. Um, and I thought, looking through the SPP, um, and part of it, do they all require a fifty percent match? Of course, there was one line that seemed to say when required, but as far as you know, they all require fifty percent.
Most of the time, and I think there's been times where it's been less, but I'm, what I've seen in the past has always been fifty percent.
The document says generally fifty percent. And in the projects I've seen, it's almost always been fifty percent. But there's, you know, forty-five available. I I know it's a really great park project. I I can see the trustees proving it.
And then I know it's gonna depend on how well the grant writer, how qualified they are with any estimate of time on the filling out the form, the SPP.
The registration form is very
It's just that's all.
It's just that one page on page five of the SPP that you're looking at. It's very simple to fill out. And then if they have any questions, they can give me a call and submit questions. But we're, feel free to give us a call too to talk more about what they're thinking of doing.
Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, for making it.
For making the time to come here and talk to us.
As they were determined.
No, I really appreciate it. It is. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you both, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll take a little break before the meeting.
The mayor and two of the.
I
Charles.
I never get to use the gavel and I didn't know where it was. So, um, thank you, everybody. It's nice to see a full room. Um, I will call the Tuesday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty four Lions Board of Trustees, move them to order. Our best guests, can we please have the roll?
Yes, Mayor Rogan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Farrell.
Present.
Trustee Elson.
Present.
Trustee Dottie.
Present.
Trustee Edding.
Present.
Trustee Delman.
Present.
And trustee Williams.
Presence.
With you, please rise with the Pledge of Legions.
My allegiance to the one. To the public, for which it stands, one nation, one group. And it's all.
It's really great to have a whole room. To do that. Should you approve the agenda? Is there a second? Yeah, I would like to pro- propose an amendment to the agenda tonight. We have a whole lot of folks here to speak, I'm assuming during um. Audience business, the Housing Futures Assessment Plan. And so what I would like to propose is that after everybody has spoken to that. Um, we allow time for staff to respond. And then any trustee who would like to respond can do so at that time. Typically, we don't respond to public comment, although we may address. Public comment later in our trustee reports, but since you are all here, I feel like if we have something to say after the public comment, you shouldn't have to wait around for the entire meeting. Here. Um, so that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, we're voting on the amendment.
And my apologies, I can't see all of the green.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we'll take a reflective moment of silence. Thank you, and I'll read the land acknowledgement. We must acknowledge with respect as non-native people that the land on which we stand, live and learn is the traditional territory of the Ute. Cheyenne and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Now, we have an item here for audience business before our staff report. After our staff reports, we have the public comment for the Housing Futures Plan. So if there is anybody here who would like to speak to something besides the Housing Futures Plan, I would invite you to do so now. And you can just come on up. Okay, if there's anybody in line, you can raise your hand or unmute yourself. So let's move on to staff reports, the Boulder County Sheriff's Office report.
Um, thank you. Sergeant Sears is um unavailable this evening, so he submitted his report to you and ready. As you'll see, his January statistics to date. Um, are quite uneventful, other than twenty-seven traffic stops. Um, other than that, there's not been a lot of activity locally. Um, he also included his flock camera statistics. And um, sent you some updates on um, the flock camera does not appear that it will be able to be funded through a grant. It has to be directly for certain law enforcement duties and cameras are not one of those. So we did approve those being paid for under our budget, so we'll take care of that. Longmont Humane Society contracts, uh, discussions need to continue there a bit. It feels as if the sheriff um feels strongly that lions animal control. Um, that any surrenders to the humane society should be covered one hundred percent by our contract. Um, Longmont Humane Society feels that any animals brought in by animal control. Are covered by the contract, but there is a separate contract for other types of surrenders in town brought in by people. Individuals. So we have some discussions that need to occur there before we are ready to bring forward any agreements. I've not signed any contracts. Okay. And then lastly, he wanted you to know that Deputy Ryan, who has worked. The night shift here in Lions for many, many years is being shifted in his duties because he has two canines. And they're going to put him in the metro, more metro areas. Um, and we're getting the new deputy who will be nights and his name is Deputy Schimmel. So you will be seeing a new face on the night shift if you encounter them. So that was his report.
Any questions about the report that we can pass on to Sergeant Sears? Okay. Um, then the administrator report, please.
And I'll make this short as well. Um, I just want to make sure people are aware that um, we've. Is um, working with the county on a. Uh, community meeting that's to occur this Thursday from six to six forty-five at the library. To discuss what's called a process called postvention. It has to do with um, suicide loss. And um, helping people uh, deal with that and come up with coping skills and volunteer to. Be the eyes and ears in the community to try to prevent that from occurring further. So we want to invite everyone to that. Um, the demolition on the four hundred and two building on Main Street is on hold during these extreme temperatures. They just can't do the work they need to do. In this weather. Um, I do want to let people know there is. Um, they're taking feedback now on the remediation and restoration of the old South Saint Green and reach on the South Saint Green Creek. And I did put a few little um, links to give your input on the plans. That they are proposing for that area. We included EcoPass um, data for twenty twenty-three. And then a couple of big events coming up that the community should get involved with. Um, there will be uh, the town art show. As you can see, we have new art displayed for the next three months. So. The meet the artists and talk about their art is uh, January seventeenth tomorrow night by thirty to seven. And the Android Jones who did the mural outside is going to put it in motion. So it should be an interesting um. Art show tomorrow night. So join us. The first winter uh, Wonderland Concert Series at Laverne Johnson Park will be this Sunday afternoon. And um, the tenth anniversary of the Old Man Winter Rally will be February fourth. At Bone Park. And as you know, that draws in about twelve hundred. People to the community during the winter, cold winter months, so um, support. They appreciate the support they can get. And then last but not least, February ninth is going to be another blood drive. And I don't know if you've been hearing the national news. But um, there is a severe, severe shortage of blood right now. So Lions has always turned out well for that event. Um, but it will be held at the regional library from nine to one on Friday, February night. We encourage people to sign up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about things? Go ahead.
Um, is there a chance that anybody got, anybody reached out to um, the principals of the elementary school and at the middle high school? Or the post?
Uh, yes, and so the um, the person who's helping Leaf with this, who Leaf is working with, is one of ten people in the country who do this work. And he had meetings with the high school principal and the elementary school principal, and tomorrow morning we're meeting with the fire department.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I really encourage everybody to attend this community orientation. It's um, it's a great opportunity and I believe we'll be talking about something called psychological first aid training. So that um, we can all help each other when times get tough. Any other questions for Administrator Simonson? Uh, legal update, Attorney Dittman.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rogan. Uh, given the number of people in the room, I might keep it shorter than I normally would for something like this, but. I did want to update the um, Board of Trustees on a case that came from the Colorado Court of Appeals. Um, that's relevant to executive sessions, and I think it's interesting, case one and two, something we should um, keep an eye on. And so the the very quick version of this is that um, is a case between the Sentinel Colorado, Aurora Sentinel, which is the local newspaper in Aurora. And uh, the clerk in Aurora, who is the custodian of records, it involves executive sessions and. Uh, basically whether or not um, executive session was conducted properly in Aurora. And I think the important thing to take about away from this case is that Aurora made a lot of mistakes. Um, and leading up to this executive session, um, there was a dispute between two council members. Um, one council member filed a censure um, you know, um, request against another council member. There was an investigation um, to make that investigation go away, the attorney for the accused council member. And the city attorney basically entered into a settlement agreement of some kind. Um. And that was the purpose of the executive session, was to discuss this, this settlement agreement. And you know what Aurora specifically did wrong was that, one, they didn't list the purpose with any specificity of the executive session. This is legal advice. It seems like it was done very last minute and just, you know, they listed the legal advice as the reason why they're in an executive session. And then two, um, when they can, during the executive session, actually held a vote on the settlement. And I think this council, this um, Board of Trustees knows from our past executive session, that's something very clearly we cannot do if we want to have any sort of vote or take any sort of formal action. Um, you know, we must do so outside the executive session. So because those kind of two mistakes were made, um, you know, I'll forego a lot of the other more colorful history of this. Um, the Sentinel sued um, Aurora, asking for the reporting of what happened. Aurora denied it. Aurora tried to basically cover their tracks and and do what's called a cure of the executive session and um, you know, issues. Um, and they, you know, still maintained their lawsuit. Um, the the district court said the cure was good enough to basically fix all the issues. The Colorado Court of Appeals, upon reviewing that decision, said it wasn't. And so that's kind of where the case is now. Um, you know, the the important takeaways is that, you know, one, the executive session always needs to say what it's about with. Enough specificities that the public knows why we're going into executive session, which I think we've always done a really good job of. And then, you know, two. Then we can't take any formal action. And that's kind of the part of this case that's a little more interesting. Because um, you know, and one reading of the Court of Appeals decision is that. Um, the issue was the vote itself and the fact that, that you know, they were, you know, doing something. Um, you know, uh, through that vote. And another way to read this case, however, is that any sort of um, you know, direction um. Given during executive session may be problematic under certain circumstances. And I think that's the more um, concerning, you know, potential read of this case. I don't think it necessarily reads that way from my perspective, but that's the way some people have read this case. And so I think there's a kind of probably be an appeal of this to figure out more of what the parameters are on. What we can and can't do during executive session. I think everyone pretty much agrees that the executive session was done poorly. Um, but more um, concerning is what are the parameters by which we can act with an executive session? And so I don't have any concerns with how we're doing anything now, but it's certainly something we're going to keep an eye on. And see if we get any more sort of guidance on, you know, what's okay and what's not okay. But I think, you know, my reading of the case and. And the reading of the case of my colleagues is that, you know, we're doing everything right right now. Um, and it's really just a cautionary tale of um, how these things can go wrong. So, um, that's pretty much it for right now, but I just want to give you an update on that case. I'm happy to send it around. Um, and of course, we'll update you if there's any other um, developments um, with regard to how we conduct executive sessions.
Thank you. Questions for Attorney Dittman? Okay, okay. So then um, we will move on to the Housing Futures Assessment Plan, the public comment. Um, did Bohannon have a couple of slides?
Yeah, he's here.
Um, Derek. Hi, Derek. So Derek Webb, um, as you know, has been our consultant on this project for the last about nine months. And um, the, we are getting ready to um, wind up this project. It it was actually, just to give a little background for folks. The state of Colorado is encouraging, as we know, um. Looking at ways to improve affordability and living in in Colorado. And as such, they're encouraging municipalities to conduct what they're calling a housing assessment. And it is giving you an inventory of your current housing. It's taking um, public input on where they feel issues are with with housing in your community. It's looking at your zoning. And the goal is not to come out with um, the, what, what Derek and his group at BHI have done is not come up with. A document that we adopt to like the comp plan and we have to follow. What it is, is to develop and suggest strategies. To communities so that, because we're not experts in this and we don't have a, a housing authority. It's to suggest strategies for um, elected officials to consider adopting. Um, that would meet the goals of your comp plan. And the goals of what your community said during this nine months of gathering data. So um. Tonight, I think Derek is going to just do a few quick slides again. You've all seen the document several times. Um, and uh, we had asked, the state had asked us to be done with this project at the end of December. I did get a one-month extension. We said because of the holidays, we felt we needed more public input and looks like we got it tonight. So um. We need to consider the, the public input tonight and then get direction from the board on how you want to proceed. Um, but to be able to get any of the federal funding that will come um, through the state. We must have this assessment. And we must identify policies and strategies we want to adopt. Otherwise, communities will not be eligible to receive the funding. So tonight is not saying we're doing. Any or all of the things within the document. It's a snapshot of the public inputs. It's a snapshot of our current conditions. And the next step will be for the board and the planning commission. To start considering if there's policies there we want to adopt um, to diversify our housing stock. And I I'll just add one thing before. Um, the other thing I want to add is um, you may or may not have heard the last legislative session, there was a bill called SB two thirteen. And that was Governor Polis's big, big, big housing bill. And that would have removed local control of land use decisions from municipalities. That did not pass. What is coming back this legislative session is going to be a number of different smaller bills. One of the things that everybody kind of agrees is going to happen is every municipality will have to do a housing assessment plan. And so knowing that this was likely coming down the pike, having funding for the plan from the Department of Local Affairs. We move forward with it.
So, yeah, so, okay, I'm sorry.
You, you did mention that at at some point, we do need to put, we need to move in some way forward here. Is there a timeline on that? Are we, are we talking that a year or two year?
When we opted into Proposition one, two, three as a community, um, we said that we would can, I adopt. Two to three policies over, I don't know if it was a cou- over the next couple of years.
Couple of years.
But, but really, the mayor is absolutely right. If, if basically the legislature is saying, if you don't take action at the local level, we'll make blanket decisions at the state level.
Yeah.
So it's important for us to really consider these strategies, which ones work in Lions. Because we, we are very unique and we don't fit the mold of the metro areas and the front range that's growing by tons. So. Um, we need to pick which, which strategies work for us to help to diversify them. Okay, Derek, take it away.
Sure. And I think Attorney Dittman may have had a comment on the number or whatnot.
I was going to clarify that as a three-year period that we have to make those commitments. So that's all.
Thank you.
Oh, the only other commitment we have regarding housing with Proposition one, two, three is that we will add ten units. Of affordable housing in the next three years. That's the other, that's the one commitment we have made. And Summit Housing did not count because they already had their building permits in place prior to us entering that agreement.
Okay. All right, Derek.
All right. Well, thanks so much. Um. I'll just introduce myself real quick. I've got about eight slides. Um, I I've got some commentary that goes with with what's on the slide, but um, we'll get through the slides real quick. I'll provide an overview. Of um, of the plan itself and the process that we've been through and then obviously open it up to to comment. Um, my name is Derek Webb. Again, uh, I'm a senior planner with Bohannon Houston. I've been a planner for over twelve years. Um, more recently on the private sector side of things and very deeply involved in. Housing needs assessments, uh, housing-related policy work, housing-related programs and strategy work uh, throughout the state, um, especially in the last three years. Um. I will share my screen real quick. Let's see.
I've always been told I'm to talk to the trustees, not to the public.
We usually, we usually don't have a spool of a house. I just want to.
I don't know that. I mean, how far do you want to go so you can see this? Can you see this from here?
Yeah.
You guys can see this.
Yeah.
See the small one.
These slides are different. But we can see the small one, so that's good.
Yeah, it's really for, you're the decision maker, so.
Okay, Derek, go ahead.
Good. Okay, cool. Yeah, and again, the slides are really overview slides. We're not, I I don't have anything on the slides that are very detail-heavy. Uh, in terms of what's in the plan. I'm letting the plan speak for itself, but um, again, happy to answer questions, facilitate, help facilitate conversation, that kind of thing. But um. I'll jump in uh, real quick and and really just, you know, kind of a follow-up, maybe a reiteration of of. Um, what Administrator Simonson just kind of walked everybody through is, is specific to this project, this IHOP DOLA-funded project. It was funded by by DOLA. Um, and it considered a wide variety of strategies. DOLA has a whole list of qualifying strategies that came, kind of came along. With um, the, the funding, things to to help kind of seed the the conversation at the local level. Um, they, they also included this, this tiny strategy down at the bottom of their list that was other innovative strategies. So it really opened up. The, the, the world of possibilities in terms of what could be considered and appropriate for, for this work. Um, like um, uh, Administrator Simonson just mentioned, we've been working through this for at least the past nine months. Um, in various stages and and whatnot. And 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 really, it it was a very clear scope. I'll get into that in in just a minute. Um, somewhat limited budget, to be completely, completely honest, but we pushed it as far as we could and 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 tried to set you up with at least a, a, a list of options. And recommendations to kind of work through and think through as you move into the future of of how you want to deal with housing in the community. Um, I'll reiterate, this is a guidance ref- and reference document. It is not something that is a requirement. It's not binding. The only requirement was that we had to consider things. I think in terms of of the DOLA, the DOLA requirement. Um, was that we needed to identify at least three strategies to to kind of propose for the community. We found six. Um, and I think at the end of the day, you, you were on the hook to to adopt at least one thing. And I think what the next item on your, on your list for tonight is kind of that one thing which checks that box, right? Um, and I use that term loosely. Uh, obviously, it's a lot of work to go into it and a lot of, a, a lot of consideration in order to move forward with those policy changes, right? But, but the plan is set up specifically to give you a, a broader depth of of policy-related uh, considerations to 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 work through in the future as you, as you figure out how you want to deal with it, right? Um. The analysis included in the document uh, was completed in line with the scope of work and available budget. Again, you know, we started this project with a very clear directive. On what needed to be included in this, this Housing Futures Plan, um, and what the community and what the town wanted um, specifically out of it to help. Again, facilitate those conversations into the future on, on how to move forward. Again, the recommendations and strategies included in the document are optional. I kind of like to think them as a menu of options, right? Um, again, we, we had to identify some strategies. You had to iden- you had to to move forward with one policy, policy update. Um, but again, the rest of the stuff in there is, is all food for thought. It's all, all, all things for consideration and and potential opportunities to, to help um. Deal with the housing situation uh, in the community. So just getting that all out there, I'll move forward. Um, real quick, project timeline, again, roughly nine months of work. What you see on the screen is is really the, the list of, of tasks that were associated with the project. Um, I won't go into too much detail, but I do want to point out that um. The community housing profile, uh, which we'll get into in just a minute, is really like the data-heavy piece of the thing, of the stuff. It's, it's the forecast. It's, it's what's the situation currently. Um, it's, it's, you know, what are housing values currently right now? What does the housing stock look like? What does owner, owner and renter occupation, uh, occupancy look like? That type of stuff. The other key piece is the community engagement. We started day one thinking through how to structure this very fast, um, very um. Uh, labor-intensive budget, um, i- in, in a way that we could try to get as much community engagement as possible. So. Um, that, that encompassed a project website, an interactive map. Um, that actually, I just double-checked and it looks like some folks have still been um. Dropping pins and comments on. We're up to a hundred and sixty-one comments on, on the public, uh, the public comment map. Or the interactive map. Um, and really, the, the purpose of that interactive map was to try to identify where the community felt. Uh, increased density, more housing development was appropriate and where it was not. And obviously, you can probably assume that there was some conflict there, right, in several key locations. The plan tries to address that. Uh, but again, that, that whole density analysis and interactive mapping activity was really to try to help. Provide a starting point for the community, again, to work from in terms of trying to think through where housing should, should potentially be placed or where, where to incentivize housing in the community. Um, and then, you know. Back in September, we really started hard on the, on the plan development piece of it. Um, and with the draft and the final and getting that out to the community, it's been posted for a little while. Um, I think the initial draft was posted um, toward the end of November. We've had uh, another um, kind of version created based on some of the initial feedback that we heard from the Planning Commission. And the Board of Trustees um, multiple time, multiple meetings ago, um, to, to the final version that that you see in front of you um, today or that's available today. Um, I'm just going to walk you real quick through the contents of the plan. For those that that haven't fully read through the whole thing or or just, uh, you know, familiar with a few pieces of it or whatnot. Um, the contents generally follow this outline here, the bulleted list here. Um. Executive summary is meant to be the quick snapshot. Everybody's pretty familiar with what an executive summary is, so I won't dig in there. The community housing profile, the for- forecasted needs and the density analysis are, again, that data-heavy piece. The density analysis piece is what brings in the public comment. Um, and and the spatial uh, spatial understanding of those, those public con- that, that public comment. Um, really, this piece is meant to provide background. To frame kind of how serious the issue is currently. Um, and to set you up for, again, future funding opportunities and whatnot. What do the numbers look like? How can you, how can you pose? A narrative around the situation in Lions that could potentially help, help you, help, help you receive funds uh, for things like infrastructure that would support. Uh, housing development, public-private partnership dollars, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, moving into part four, um, the scope of work for this project really wanted to, to take the work that the community had done to develop. The vision and goals and objectives and all that kind of stuff that was, that's housed in the, the comprehensive plan that that was recently adopted. And really create something very specific to, to housing. And so that includes, included uh, the development of a housing-focused division. For the community and a set of goals. The goals rely back to the forecasted needs, um, but they. for the community and a set of goals. The goals rely back to the forecasted needs, um, but they also pull in the, the, what we've been calling the aspirational goals um, associated with housing that are included in the, uh, in the comprehensive plan. So again, using kind of that umbrella plan, um, the, the comprehensive plan to help focus um, the, the effort here. Um, and then you get into part five, which is really the meat, I think, of, of the, the document in terms of potential next steps a- and future considerations. Excuse me. Um, it outlines those six strategies. Um, and, and outside of just listing strategies and policy changes, it tries to, to steer the community to understand how to do those things. So we didn't want to just say, oh, here's your strategy and here's what you do. It was, here's your strategy. What's the justification for the need to do this? And how could you potentially go about um, addressing it? What are the policy mechanisms? What does some um, draft code language look like? What are other communities that you could potentially look at into to see how things are going? Or to create a relationship with or just call up and say, hey, you adopted this two years ago. How's it been going? Have you seen any movement? Have you seen any issues? That kind of thing. So that's part five and the, the appendix um, kind of uh, pieced together. Um, I kind of walked through all these, so I'll skip through these really quick. Again, parts one, two, and three uh, are the foundational data and the potential direction. Part four, providing direction and justification. What is the vision for, for housing in the community? What are the goals? Um, and then part five and the appendix is the implementation piece. How to do it? What is it? How to do it? Why, why you should do it? I could go on for a long time, so I'll stop.
Thank, thank you, Derek. Um, would you push the screen back and um, Derek, would you mind unsharing your screen? Hey, thank you. Um, okay. Does, uh, does the board have any questions for Derek? I know we've heard this presentation before.
I ask about. Uh, yeah, I'd like to ask one question.
Yeah.
Um, so Derek, uh, yes. One of the parts I found really interesting was page nineteen is where you did a forecast of future households. And in here, you stated in this graph on page nineteen that we have eight hundred and ninety-two households. And you're projecting that we go to twenty fifty with twelve hundred and thirty-four. So an increase of three hundred and forty-two households over roughly about twenty-five years, twenty-six years, right? I'm wondering how you projected that because y- you did mention population growth. And um, I looked at that number and, you know, I did a little bit of math in my head and that's about a one point two percent growth annually. Um, one point two percent. And then I looked at like Colorado's growth and it's about one point five to one point eight. So we're starting here with a discussion of really underperforming growth in Colorado. First of all, my question is, is did I reason that right? And how did you come up with the one point two percent? Let me just stop there. Those are my two questions.
Okay. Um, I would have to dig back into the actual, you know, Excel spreadsheet to make sure that that percentage is, is in line with what, what we, what we used. I'll tell you how we started to get there. And it was um, looking at the historical trend, I think from nineteen ninety-two to current. Um, and, and what that trend line looked like and that average growth rate in population. Um, and then projecting that out to twenty fifty. Um, we then used that population number and came up with and, and continued basically the trend of uh, current household size. And I think you guys are at something like two point six um, to come up with the number of households that you would need to have in order to support that population increase out to twenty fifty.
Okay, so you're saying that one point two percent, and I'm pretty sure I calculated that right. I think it's one point one eight percent. Um, I'm pretty sure I calculated that right. You're saying that's based not necessarily on Colorado growth, but on previous growth of Lyons.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay, so, all right. So then I am right. I mean, we have definitely been underperforming growth as far as overall for Colorado.
Yeah.
Cause it's around one point eight percent. Okay, thanks. All right.
Good questions. Okay. So um, we're gonna go ahead and start the public comment. Do you have the list? So many, okay. So um, so a couple of ground rules. Um, when Administrator Simonson called your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and your physical address, not your P O box. And then each person will have three minutes to address the board. Um, who, I think, are you? Mayor Portham's gonna, um, is kind enough to keep time. Um, and if, if you simply agree with something that somebody else has said, you certainly don't need to take your three minutes. Um, you're welcome to do so. And then we're all, after we're finished with the folks in the room, we're gonna go ahead and move on to folks virtually and um, we're gonna try to keep this to an hour. And I have some written submittals as well. Yep. And then after the folks um, online talk, then there are some comments to be read into the record. So. Sound good? An hour? Okay, all right. The first person um, is Rob Miller.
Thank you, uh, Rob Miller, ten nineteen Horizon Drive. And I want to thank the mayor and the trustees for the time to be able to uh, address you. Um, and so first off, I want to say I appreciate all of the work that's gone into this. What a lot of great data and information that helped me kind of go through and I spent a lot of time going through it. And so I want to focus just on a couple of things. One of the things that I felt actually was left out is not the data, but the nature of the town of Lyons. Is that, and what I mean by that is that I walked away with some of the things that were in there and Derek kind of almost referenced them is in particular, some of the housing stock. We are currently at eighteen or uh, tw- eighty-two percent with our single homes and then eighteen percent. And there was kind of this idea that there is a good number of distribution and pointed to the city of Boulder, which is forty and sixty percent. And I kind of paused for a second because I don't think we are the city of Boulder. You have a university there. You have a lot of different things on that. And, and maybe that wasn't the intent, but the intent was, it got me thinking, what is the nature of Lyons? And the nature of Lyons is about being a smaller community. We moved here eight years ago because we liked the small-town feel, what that was about and the like. So I appreciate the fact that we need to think about not only growth because that is part of, you know, what we are, but what does that growth look like in the nature of who we are in Lyons? And so that was one of the things and that I felt was missing in the document. And again, maybe that's not the whole element of it, but I'd like that to be thought through is what do we want as far as the town of Lyons? And part of it is that balanced growth. But what does that mean as far as affordability, apartments, duplexes and things like that? The second thing that came to my mind is the infrastructure. Water usage, sewer, the green space and the things like that. So how are we thinking about that from that perspective? And I think that's something that was silent in here and I'm particularly concerned about water usage, as we all are, I'm sure. But that's something that in thinking that through, that was an element. Um, I also think about the economic basis. As we think about growth and there were some comments about how many people leave Lyons in order to work. Well, part of that is, I think maybe that's why people come to Lyons. I don't want to live where I work and that's why we're here in Lyons. And so maybe there's some element of that of understanding what that correct balance is. And the last piece. All right. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. You're welcome to submit. Yeah, if you would like to submit the rest of your comments, you can go ahead and email them to us. Yeah, submit them, please, if you want.
Okay.
Oh, he just took my hand. I believe the next person listed is is Kay, Kay Sparks. But Kay, I didn't know if that was for a later presentation. Okay. There's a couple more chairs, you guys. It's, Joe, it's, you can sit on here.
Um, I'm Kay Sparks, twenty-one sixty-nine Apple Valley Road, Lyons. I'm here with a hat on for the chair of the Housing and Building Services Commission. I s- we sent our comments to Victoria. I don't know if the major packer or not.
Maybe they did. Okay.
Strategy one. We are in support of this increasing density zone. We're wondering about re-flattening the one lots into two lots. And let me know, let me say, when this was Victoria, it was shared with Derek, who answered a lot of her questions, mostly with information. But if you're interested in his response, let me know and I will email it to Victoria. You can get the whole. Number two, we for strategy two, but we really feel there's a need to be an increase in staffing, not just for expedited reviews for new developments, but for improvements for existing properties. Do we have the staffing infrastructure to do this? That's key. Three. We support the concept of increased density. Generally, we've got Main Street being demolished and rebuilt. And so we've got a real role model there for a second story, possibly, some housing. We already have a role model there on Main Street or second-story housing. So maybe we ought to look at that. We also then need to look at, especially with the numbers we're looking at, what about the infrastructure for schools, water, et cetera? That wasn't their job to look at that. We didn't pay them enough to look at that. But I think we need to look at that because that's a big implication. Um, we asked the question about how much vacant town-owned property there actually is to work with. And again, that wasn't their, their daily width, um, and that's ours. So look at this. Um, and we gave a couple listing of places to look. Strategy five. We, we support the concept and additional research into reducing fees because that has a lot of implications, both to facilitate development, but then also it does impact our budget. Strategy six supports the, we support that concept. Um, looking more at long-term rentals, um, as we look at ADUs, short-term ADUs are not gonna help us. We need to really encourage and incentivize in some way folks who want to do ADUs for long-term rentals. That's gonna help us. And possibly Proposition one, two, three, I don't know, to help um, homeowners to upgrade their ADUs so they meet standards for fire safety, et cetera. So that's just about it. And you have any questions? Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're bored, weren't we? I'll say the human services thing, right? And we have two empty slots.
We actually prefer you not stand because that's an exit for a fire. So please help yourself to these two chairs. There might be. And there might be a couple more. I looked in that area. Aaron, I already did those. There's, might be a couple in line. The next person listed is Pam Barnes. And she'll be followed by David Hertz. We'll keep this moving.
Thank you.
Okay, Pam, Pam, and then David.
Hi. My name is Pam Barnes. My address is four, four, three Prospect in the Confluence. Um, I thought you would be reading the submitted letters first and I was a great old girl one. So when you read that, I want you to keep in mind that I agree with everyone. And I don't know if you're familiar with the Dr. Bob Cam. That was put together in sixteen seventeen. Some of you aren't. Um, I really urge you to read it. It was um, a highly thoughtful. And I'm just going to read just a couple of words from it. Um, as far as guiding principles um, to the project, uh, number four is resiliency to future, future flood events. Referring to the Confluence and the bio properties. Um, and I have a comment about the Housing Futures Plan. It says, um, under deed-restricted bio properties, Dr. Bob, consider leveraging the newly created open space to pre-up other available land in the community for housing needs. I don't understand that. I, I'd like that explained to me. Does that, I just don't understand what that means. Leveraging newly created open space. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Right. We'll, we'll comment, as we mentioned, we'll comment after.
Evening trustees, uh, David Hertz, one, two, three, Longspreek Drive. Current president of the Longspreek Drive Homeowners Association. Um, first of all, I want to thank you for all the work you do. I know it's, you know, can be a thankless task sometimes and I'm, I'm always amazed, week in and week out, how much happens in this small town of ours. And not just minor things, but significant consequential things that require your time and consideration. So thank you. Um, I'm here on behalf of myself, but I also speak for my neighbors, some of my neighbors who are here as well or online or at home. Um, and we just wanted to express our concern with um, the potential development that's shown in the plan on the town parcel at the top of Longspreek Drive. Um, you, that town, that parcel is currently zoned as parks and open space. And you probably know that was an agreement made over twenty years ago with the town and uh, Stephen Tebow and the Tebow Development, um, and a bunch of citizen involvement at that time as well. A lot of my neighbors were involved in that process. A lot of them still live on my street twenty-five years later. And um, I think they're a little alarmed and a little disheartened to see that, you know, all the work they put into protecting that is maybe at risk again. Um, so I wanted to speak for them. Uh, that parcel, along with our HOA lands, provides a pretty popular loop trail up in the north side of town. Um, it's about a mile in length, you know, kind of between the cemetery and stick in the alley and around. Um, popular dog walkers and it's really the only trail, I think, north of Maine. So it serves, you know, by a few of us up in that part of town. And wildlife use as well documented there when my neighbors just saw a pair of golden eagles hunting there this week. And, you know, our other concerns, I think you're aware of, they kind of echo a lot of sentiment we've seen from some other, like a letter in the Redstone at the year from Fifth Avenue talking about potential for, um, you know, dense development on a high fire-risk area. Um, top of a ridge with steep slopes of shrubs and grasses below it. Um, a street that wasn't built to today's standards and width, um, to one-way in and out. Um, so I think those are all. And it's currently, as you also know, probably above the so-called, we say the blue line here. You know, the town determined those are areas of probably are cost prohibitive to provide infrastructure to and maybe a net, uh, you know, drain on future budgets trying to maintain the infrastructure. But really, I think, you know, the fact that you would have to, you'd have to take, change that uh, open space designation to residential is a, is a bad precedent. Um, and I know the town has spoken about that in the past as well. And I empathize with you guys because there is no easy solutions here. I mean, it's hard, it's so hard to find places in this, in this town for housing, affordable or not. I'd like to be in NIMBY and here I am, kind of being in NIMBY. Um, often I'm on the other side in my work, so I, I know how frustrating it is to, to hear from people and not especially when we don't have alternative solutions. Um, and I wish I did. I was gonna get to my solutions.
Tom Becker is next, followed by Kelly Canizé. Or is it?
Yeah, you got that right. Yeah, thanks for letting me speak today. I'm Jim Becker, four nineteen Park Street in the Confluence neighborhood. And um, as mentioned before, we, you hired a consultant with the housing expertise that we don't have, but Lyons does have expertise in floods, the flood recovery. And especially in the uh, Confluence neighborhood, um, maybe the epicenter of that, you know, former in some sense, uh, disaster area. Looking at this housing um, assessment and putting housing into a flood area, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. If you look at the old plat map for the Confluence neighborhood from like nineteen, I think it was nineteen oh six, it shows the river, the North Saint Barrane coming right through the Confluence, not its current path. It came right through the middle of it. Could happen again. Putting housing and more people in cars and everything else in there. Next time the flood comes, which it will do, we were under flood watch and warning again this, this, just this summer. Didn't happen, but it could happen again. So I'm suggesting that any development into the Confluence neighborhood is, is not warranted. And I suggest the trustees looking at this and you'll hear more from the Confluence neighborhood insurer about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Kelly will be Jack.
Give Jack most of my time because he has a summary of a little survey.
We, we don't allow people to combine time.
Okay. Previous speaker.
Could you, could you say your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Kelly Canazay, four, two, three, Evans Street.
Thank you.
Okay. Previous speaker was a good introduction of what I was going to say. And that's the Water Symposium is coming up. And I'm trying to pass the word for people to attend that. Once I get my notification, I'll going to pass it along to the rest of Confluence. But a lot of my comments are captured in a little survey. And I believe that you had correlated those.
Okay, thank you very much.
Following Jack will be Kitty.
Hi, my name is Jack Justice from three, four, six Park Street in the Confluence neighborhood. And I recently met with several of my neighbors, many of whom have lived in the area since before and through the 2013 flood. And I put together a short survey and ninety-four percent of the eighteen survey respondents voted no. They do not want construction to take place on the buyout properties. Seventy-six percent of them voted that they do want the town to relax restrictions on ADUs. In our meeting, there were three key reasons that our neighborhood felt that there should not be construction in this area. The first of which is that it would be unethical to build on land that people were essentially forced to take a buyout from. They were told that they couldn't bu, uh, build there. They couldn't live there. It wasn't safe. And we need to honor that. The second thing is that it's unsafe and financially unsustainable to have more properties, vehicles, pets, all of the different things that come along in that area that was deemed unlivable. And, and thirdly, the, the neighborhood's finally back on its feet. It's a beautiful area and many of the people really struggled. They went through many years of strife and financial hardship waiting to rebuild. And it's finally a great place again, and we don't want that to be disrupted. My suggestion is, is again, to relax the restrictions on ADUs. This would increase the supply of rentals, which would then theoretically decrease the, uh, the, the price of them. So I really appreciate it. I also think that the map was kind of confusing and I appreciate Mayor Rogan responding on Facebook. Many of the, the comments on the map were anonymous. And we're not sure who suggested that. Were those people who live here? Were they, were the people who live in the Confluence area? So I hope you guys read the survey. I did email it in and consider our feedback. Thank you. I sent it to the email address that was on the town website. It was it wasn't a person. It just, it was T O L underscore B O T at townoflions.com. Was that the right place to send it?
We'll get to the right, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We followed by Brian Denell.
Hi, my name is Kitty Wong. I live at four, forty-one Evans Street in the Confluence neighborhood. And yeah, we're going to thank you, thank you for the opportunity to address the bill today. And I really just have two questions that I want to ask with my time. One is, what are the plans that the board has or are considering for the Confluence neighborhood? And the second question, which is more of a more specific question is, you know, do you have plans or considering to change the status of the Dr. Bob properties in the Confluence neighborhood? And I would be very interested in hearing one of the responses to the two questions. Thank you.
Brian will be followed by Jason Stillman.
Brian Denell, twenty-five-year resident of three, nine, five, that's his score. And along with my lovely wife. And I was on the board for six, six years, six long years. And was actually acting mayor for five months. So I can say firsthand, thank you sincerely for all the hours you put in and hopefully not too many errors. I'm, I consider myself pretty moderate in terms of my considerations about growth. And I try to consider all the aspects. I got that by virtue of being on the board and considering how I was on the land use liaison for a while. One, uh, side note, um, one of my projects, one of my goals while I was a member of the board was to put a sidewalk on Fifth Avenue. And yes, got it done. Did that for safety reasons because we have people basically walking in the street. Now we still have people walking in the street, which I don't understand. But it is, you know, the, the, the street is wide enough for two vehicles. And people walk in the street and there's sidewalks. So especially in festival season, it's just a dicey proposition. So when I look at the, the plan, or is it this, a list of suggestions, a list of options? I have to say, I've still got trouble wrapping my head around that, what it is and how it will be used. Which the explanation was, I think I heard, you're kind of just going to use it however you can. But it's not really a plan. It's, it's not really a policy statement. But at any rate, you go through the document, you come up with suitable places, which I think are for potential development and or increased density. And I look at all of that. And I just, I, safety is not mentioned in there at all, with the exception of flood. And I support the comments we had on flood being considered. And I would just like to know that fire, evacuation routes, and all of those other aspects are a part of the consideration that are tied integrally to any development that you use and you proceed with from this document. It should be front and center. So that's a, a great concern of mine. The the, the changing of the R one to, uh, uh, increase density. To me, I, that helps me understand where we're going to have our frontiers and, and, you know, and it comes from my personal experience. We've been in those areas and I'm going to sit down.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it.
Jason?
Hello, I'm Jason Stillman. I live at four, oh, six Prospect Street in the Confluence. I've been living there about seventeen years. So I was there through the flood. And as some of my neighbors here have stated, I was just kind of a little bit surprised when I saw the suggestion that maybe some of those buyout properties might be considered for development. Good friends of mine, Jan Oakley Schilling, some people of you, some people might remember, remember them or know them. Lived directly across the street from me and were, were part of the buyout property. The buyout. And I think out of respect for them and everyone else that was a part of that and was really urged to leave and, and take advantage of this for safety. I just think we need to respect those wishes. And my hope would be that we really don't entertain any potential development on those properties that we decided just ten years ago that we're not buildable anymore.
Thank you very much.
Tom Bishop?
Sitting like this, you're never really supposed to ask a question.
Could you, could you state your name or address, please? Thank you.
And I live at three, three, eight Park Street, P O box twelve ninety-four.
Thank you.
Lyons, Colorado, you know, five. So you're not supposed to ask a question that you don't know the answer to. So I won't ask if there's anybody on the board that wasn't here during the flood. But like when I come into this room, one of my memories, and it's not a fond memory, but is my neighbor Wilma who lived across the street, who was sitting in here trying to find out if she could rebuild or not. And she ended up taking the buyout. As my neighbor Bob, who lived at the door, he was so traumatized that he couldn't even come back to the Confluence. He never came back. He just took the buyout. And I can look out my window on the second floor of my house now, and I can see three different locations where people who I knew used to live and are no longer living. And I think, you know, historically, only one person was officially killed in the flood. But I think a lot more people lost their lives because they lost their will. And it was a hard fight. It wasn't months. It was, it was years. It was four and a half years that we, before we could come back. So all I'd like to say is those buyout properties were supposed to be in perpetuity. And I looked up perpetuity in the dictionary today and it didn't say seven years from now. Didn't say ten years from now. It meant forever.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak?
Yeah, come on up.
I didn't realize we went through this so fast. Do I need to put my name on it? Um, my name is Vanessa Schatz. I'm part of the Long Peak Drive only. And we already heard David speak tonight and I'm on one, zero, six, Long Peak Drive. Adding on to what David already shared, I'm just a little bit about our community up the road. First off, again, thank you for all the work that has been done. Also, thank you, shout out to Aaron and his team who helped with road improvements and was digging around for a while to make sure we get the sewage updates done. And most recently tended to water line, right? So I'm personally just deeply impressed by the readiness of our small community in town. And a little bit about my background, I'm actually a U S immigrant. And when my husband and daughter and I went to Lyons and found our little home up there, we just fell in love with it. The sense of space and the openness. And another thing that was really compelling to us and it's also reflected in the room tonight is the sense of community, the sense of grit and investment. And I think that includes all of you as well. And I think in addition to everything that's been said, I mean, the pressures that are on the state, the pressures that are on midsize and smaller communities are perhaps also a unique opportunity to think more innovatively about long-term solutions, especially if we're talking strategies and policy level. And I remember, I mean, when we decided to join the community here, I was also so inspired by some of the neighbors that David mentioned earlier. I mean, people who twenty, thirty years ago actively worked with the town and developers to create solutions. And maybe now is another time or a chapter in the story to really rally together and work together and really figure out what we can do to protect everything that makes our community so special. And some of the comments, and you may have seen them in the survey, because I know our neighbors were really actively participating. In fact, I think Long Peak Drive had a massive big bullseye out there. And most of the comments pointed out to how much we cherish nearby wildlife, the open space. Our homeowners association too, and we're so happy to share the space we have up there. And it'd be amazing to, yeah, create a long-term solution together to, to preserve it. So, and I'm really excited to hear David's solution as well that he can share tonight. So we'll definitely email you.
Please do.
But we just wanted you to also add more faces to our community and express our gratitude. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My name is Harold Halstein. I'm at four, thirty-one Evans. I might be one of the newer residents in town here. I'm here to speak in support of liberalization of ADU requirements in town. I do think that as a approach to adding housing, that it will allow residents to choose their own architecture, their own design. It will keep the aesthetic of the town similar to how it is. So, so I speak first off to say, I think this is a great way forward. I also think that making things easier for locals to do development in town is very helpful. I am, however, far more concerned about what appears to me to be state level dictation to the town of Lyons about what should be done and how things should be looked at. I relocated from Boulder because I grew tired of that mentality. And I thought I was actually going to escape it here. I personally don't think there needs to be a goal to double the population of this town on the terms discussed. I don't think that making it easier for people to build apartment buildings with corrugated metal sides and exteriors that we know are going to last no more than ten years to benefit out of town developers is necessarily a great solution for the community of Lyons. So I, I basically, I see some things in this plan that make a lot of sense. And then I see some other parts that seem to me like they're handed down from the state because they're disappointed their attempt to upzone the entire state of Colorado recently failed at the ballot boxes. So I think that that's something to, to consider more broadly as we think about what we want our community to look like, rather than letting others tell us. So thank you.
Thank you, House.
Phil Gilman on ten, ten Horizon. And I guess I just speak from the heart. I mean, we've lived here for a long time, twenty-five years. And we love this community. It's unique. It's different. Every time we drive down sixty-six from being in Denver or whatever, it's like, and I think just hearing, I mean, again, I'm really sorry, I'm ignorant and thank you for all your time you spent on this. But I, I don't think the town is ready for more development with the water, the fire, I mean, how many spares we had lately with fires. And like a shout out to you about what you said about the government and this, you know, Denver and everything. It's just Lyons is very unique. It's a beautiful town. And that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys. I wish I had the courage and time to serve on board or try it. But I've been here a long time.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Joe Mickle, four, thirty-eight Park Street.
Thank you.
I live in the Confluence neighborhood, been there for four decades almost. This is my home. This is where I work my whole life, built up in this town. That neighborhood has been through a lot. I mean, we've just finished the last of the construction, putting in the Fourth Avenue Bridge. The, even the possibility or consideration of putting that neighborhoods through more construction should be just taken off the table. We've been traumatized enough. We've lost a lot of our neighbors that passed away. Indirectly, maybe through the stress of rebuilding or not rebuilding or having to move or losing their homes. And those of us that are still there are doing the best we can. Where's, some of us are, I just finished painting my house this year, ten years later. You know, our, our backyards are still getting done and this and that. Ten years later, you know, our backyards are still getting done and this and that, I mean, the thought that we would be even possibly remotely. Putting back under some construction stuff. Is this, you just need to take it off the table. I mean, those neighbor, those lots and those towns. Were evacuated and you know, promises were made and. And um, you know, you guys should keep, you know, honor what our neighborhood was. Promised when those of us that stayed, we rebuilt, you know, and honor the people that couldn't rebuild. They didn't have the financial or the family or the support or the or just, you know. They just couldn't do it for whatever reason, we lost some really nice young families and children and stuff. And you know, if they would have had good support, they could have maybe rebuilt, anyway, I'm just asking to just take it off the table. So that we don't have to go any more damn meetings, you know, no more neighborhood meetings, we don't have to go to you guys, okay? We've done that, we did that for years and years and years, and we fought and fought, but we don't, we just want to live in peace. Okay, thanks a lot and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Very much.
I think there was someone else in the back.
Mayor, we do have about twenty minutes.
Okay.
To be able to get to.
Great.
Other folks as.
Amy Donnell, three nine five Vasquez Court. I just want to touch on some of what my husband started, ran out of time. One thing is number one, water. We all are above blue line, majority of our street. A great deal of the land you're talking about doing on the north side is all above blue line. There were, you say yourselves, you will not supply city water sewer to anything above blue line. Well, you're talking about doing it. So what, big huge water towers, we're going to do the sewers? And what are you gonna do about evacuation? You have everybody from the gravel, steamboat, Verizon, steamboat, Vasquez. Airway off to the sides, we're all gonna try to get down Fifth Avenue, which we're not, we're gonna cut through Reese C word. Cut through, go around the elementary school, come flying by Third Avenue to avoid the stoplight at High Street. And that are, I guess would be fourth, that you get one light, then you have to wait three minutes for the other. So it's gonna impact that whole area, they have no driveways, people park on the streets, they have no sidewalks. And you're gonna have all these folks, which we all know, we do it during the summer, we can't get out at the. Whatever you want to call the intersection of Fifth, High, Thirty Six, Main, Seven. Whatever, try to get in and out of that every day, multiple times a day, especially in the summer, let's add another hundred some odd cars. That's not gonna happen, we're all gonna cut through the whole town. So nobody's addressing that, I agree with Brian, safety hasn't really been addressed. There's a fire, well, everybody's trying to get up that hill to get to a fire, we're all trying to get down. That's not gonna work, so I think that needs to be put into consideration as well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to um, online, unless there's anyone else, one more in the room. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Eric Patrow, I'm at one ten Longs Peak, um, been here just a year. Young family expecting another baby and um, speaking of on behalf of, you know, Longs Peak. Drive, we're a family, we're young, um, we use the sidewalks, but there's also a lot of appeal, just the fact that kids can be around the neighborhoods and. Openly get to each other's houses, there's not any neighborhood in Colorado anymore that I know of that you can do that. Um, so I think Lyons offers something really special, everyone takes care of each other, looks out for each other, I think. When we look at density and adding to it, um, I think we really did consider where that is and again, we're. Roadways and intersections and school, um. You know, it's also our school classes are thirteen kids, um, I think there's something really appealing about that again, why why we've all worked really hard to be here. And I've been in Colorado for the past twenty years and this this town has always meant a lot to me, so I hope we can responsibly develop and consider those areas.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the folks online, um, if you're online and you'd like to speak. You can either turn your camera off or raise your hand. Peter, I can't, I can't read the last name from here. There you are, but we can see you, could you please state your name and address?
Uh, three eight five Vasquez Court. A lot of its things have already been said, and there is not a lot I can add. Um, I first want to thank also Derek and his colleagues for pretty much an impossible task. Knowing the culture in in the town like Lyons and the options they have, um, I think everybody here knows. We're limited, we're literally stuck between a couple of rocks and we try to, you know, create a town that everybody likes and that's that's a pretty impossible task almost. Um, but still, uh, hearing everybody here, everybody's happy. Um, my comment though is that, uh, and it has been pointed out before. There are a lot of additional issues that need to be addressed, floods, fire risk, et cetera. Uh, suitability and cost to the town of development and long term costs are something that was also lacking in the report. And I think those are the considerations that we really need to take up. Another exercise I probably would recommend is looking at what would the no growth strategy look like? What would that mean for the town to increase diversity and basically have very limited growth, because that's what we really are. We were talking, you know, a hundred houses, two hundred houses, if we can put them somewhere or, you know, create places where you have duplexes and multiplexes. And what is possible in a small town like Lyons, I sort of felt that that was a little bit missing uh, in uh, the study, other than that. I concur with much of what has been said and thank you everybody for your attention.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Going once. Okay, um, we have some comments to be read into the record, I think Attorney Jettman earlier today, you volunteered to. Okay, um, we're we're deputizing you to read the longest comment into the record, Attorney Jettman.
Is that Mr. Millers or Mr. Lulz, which would you prefer me to read first?
Mr. Millers.
Mr. Miller, thank you.
Pull up Mr. Millers, then I have Mr. Lulz ready to go, okay, I have Mr. Millers up. I'll make sure, it's from Ian Miller, uh, he did not list his address. In uh, the email, but I'll go ahead and try to get as much of it I can in three minutes done. So it reads, the dear Mayor Rogan, members of the town board trustees and government representatives. Due to travel, I am unable to attend the board of trustees meeting in person. But I hereby request you read this letter out loud during the board meeting on January sixteenth to enter into the record. I am writing as a concerned resident of Lyons, strongly oppose the addition of three hundred forty two housing units in our town. This development, if approved, raises substantial concerns that could significantly impact our community in multiple ways. Water scarcity, the entire Mountain West is a water scarcity problem and Lyons is no different. We are a hundred percent dependent on Longmont from whom we purchase every drop of water we use, since we don't have a reservoir of our own. With time, rates will increase and extra consumption will accelerate that trend. The Colorado Water Conservation Board updates a statewide Colorado water plan in twenty twenty two. Anticipates a supply demand gap of two hundred forty thousand to seven hundred forty thousand. Uh, acre feet for cities and industries by twenty fifty. One acre foot is enough to meet the annual water needs of about two Colorado households. That means the experts already forecast a waste, a it should be water deficit of a hundred and twenty thousand to three hundred seventy thousand homes. We need to increase the water supply and water efficiency, not strap it further. For agricultural users, shortages are already a way of life. The plan projects the existing shortfalls of two point six million acre feet for farmers and ranchers. Could increase up to three point five million acre feet by the middle of this century. It's clear that the addition of three hundred forty two housing units will exasperate this issue. This could result in water restrictions affecting residents of daily lives and local businesses dependent on a stable water supply. Waste water capacity, the proposed development may overload our existing wastewater systems, resulting in public health and environmental degradation. Inadequate wastewater capacity could lead to sewer sewer backups, causing property damage and health hazards to residents. Worse, it means untreated effluent in the Saint Brain River and downstream impacts on streams and rivers. When excess organic material leads to oxygen depletion and mass deaths of aquatic species. The wastewater treatment plant was built for the capacity in Lyons at time the contract was signed with Honeywell. Even worse, Honeywell built it incorrectly and as a result, the hotel isn't able to have laundry services. And that's currently, it is today, even without three, the extra, even without the extra three hundred forty two homes. It makes no sense that we would want to re-aggravate a problem that consumed hundreds of B O two, B O T hours from twenty sixteen to the present. Stormwater runoff, each one of the three hundred forty two homes will have a roof, a driveway, surface street access. Each inch of impermeable space reduces the ability for range replenish groundwater supplies, further reducing our freshwater supplies discussed above. Uh, but also increase the amount of stormwater runoff. This means that the flooding threat to both property and lives as well as increasing service pollution. Such as microplastics and rubber from roadware, road tire wear.
There's your three minutes, Attorney Jettman.
I got through. Quarter of it.
Administrator Simonson. Thank you, um, I have comments from Robert Brackenridge, one oh seven Bone Court. I wish the following remarks be read into the record on January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, public hearing item. Seven public comment, housing futures assessment plan prior to acceptance. These comments concern one part of the draft feud future housing plan and explain why the B O T should not accept the plan for Lyons without significant changes. I did reach out earlier to the contractor as I was preparing these comments. But their email address did not work and the company website that allows contact via a web form provided no response. One way for more housing to be built in Lyons is to build on what a plant, what the plan describes as quote vacant land, unquote. The plan includes Dr. Bob federal flood buyout properties and also the town's park system as such land. But the constraints around use are inaccurately described or not mentioned at all. Namely, number one, none of the Dr. Bob properties can be used for housing. The planned contractor needs to familiarize themselves with the relevant federal regulations. Number two, the town owned vacant parcels at the south end of Bone Park include lots E and F, Dog Park and the parcel to the south. They both have conservation easements on their deeds that do not allow housing to be built on them. Number three, if Boulder County could be convinced to remove those quote in perpetuity, unquote covenants. Which would set a terrible precedent, a townwide vote would still be required by Lyons Municipal Code for rezoning into housing. Number four, if pieces of Bone Park to the north were instead to be desired for housing. There is also a state law that requires a town vote should this parkland be sold to any developer. Or otherwise parted from townwide use. An acceptable and useful housing futures plan must include these constraints and clearly describe them. They are part of what the contractors are being paid to provide the town. To accept and publish a plan that indicates flexibility that is actually not there. Would invite developers and future town staff and governments to waste time and effort in pursuing bad options. They will need accurate information and you can insist that the contractor's report provides such, thank you, Robert Brackenridge.
Thanks. Great, and I believe we had one more from Mr. Lul, who would like to read that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take that one, this is from Greg Lul at four eleven Raymond Court, Lyons, Colorado. I understand this document's purpose, it's to enable a town to apply for housing grants under Prop one two three. But my concern is that the inaccuracies in the plan uh, may in the future be accepted as gospel and be used mistakenly drive future decisions. While there are many inaccuracies in the plan, a few stand out and should be corrected before the board accepts this plan. One, the plan analyzing assigns a score to eight thirty seven, eight hundred thirty seven R one zone properties in the town. As part of an exercise to increase density. Not of a single one of the R one parcels occurs a zero score, a serious error. Among the eight hundred thirty seven parcels are H O A regulated parcels. Like the hundred and fourteen houses in Lyons Valley Park, which should be assigned a zero rating. Likewise, likewise, any subdivision that is governed by an H O A should also receive a zero rating. The H O A restrictive covenant and L V P, for example, expressly forbids dual family dwellings or further subdivision of H O A restricted properties. Two, the plan also mentions the Dog Park. Thankfully, not as a target for housing, but rather as one of the parcels that should not be considered. But it fails to cite the legal art agreement stuck struck with the butters, Jim and Kathy Carroll. That excludes housing on town land within a defined radius around their property. This agreement is is essentially the death knell for any housing proposed for the Dog Park. The plan needs to be a reference in this agreement. Uh, the plan needs to reference this agreement. The three, the plan never mentions that a ballot vote was required for approval of any development on town parks and open space lands like the Mount Martin Parcel. Now town zoned open space. But the Martin Parcel is included in the plan as a parcel that could potentially be utilized to support the housing needs in the future. The omission of the vote aspect needs to be rectified before this plan can be accepted. Four, the plan needs to definitively state that the Dr. Bob parcels are not suitable for housing. These parcels were purchased, purchased and raised by the federal government because they were in the flood hazard zone. And are recapped in perpetuity as open space. Insist that the plan exclude these parcels from any consideration for housing, either market rate or affordable. I have other less important issues with this plan, such as the unrealistic po- town population growth and the addition of three hundred forty two housing units. Without annexation by twenty fifty. But I will, but will not detail them as I, as I'm sure others will. I urge the board not to accept this plan as written into demand that it more accurately reflect the limits of growth. Um, inherent in Lyons, lest this plan become an inadvertent blueprint to guide future boards and town staff, thank you, Greg Lul.
Greg had fifteen seconds left.
Wow. He knew, he knew that.
He timed himself, thank you, Attorney Jettman. Um, so, so we'll, we'll close public comment then and I'd like to give staff an opportunity to respond.
I think we should have Derek maybe respond first to the things that the scope of what the grant.
Sure.
Covered.
Sure.
So people understand what he was and was not. Um, what Dola wanted to see come out of this.
Okay.
Um, because I think a lot of the issues brought up are ancillary to what their firm was hired to do.
Okay, Derek, would you like to respond?
Sure, um. Trying to figure out how to respond. The, the, the scope of the project. And and I don't know, I think, I think maybe we back up for a minute and talk about the title of the, of the project, right? The Housing Futures Plan, um, which. I don't know, it, it was dictated in the, in the R F P for the project, it's been, it's been carried forward since the beginning of the project. And and maybe that's a little bit of a misleading title, um, to to be completely transparent and fair and and I, I, I think it's come up a, a, a few times throughout the conversation tonight. About what is this, is it a plan, is it a guide, is it, is it whatnot, um, and so, so maybe that's one thing to consider. Um, as we, we wrap up and try and try to finalize, um, what, what the plan looks like. Um, in terms of scope. Again, we had a very tight timeline, a very limited budget. And um, I think a couple of other things to remember was that it is probably not lost on a few folks that the town already had a housing needs assessment. Uh, it was done post flood. Um, and if you've taken a look at that document, I think it was actually part of the, the R F P process was to, to, to talk about some of the shortcomings of that document. I think if you look at that document, it's very specifically uh, data driven. Um, it points a lot to a lot of the issues, um, it highlights a few opportunities. But it didn't necessarily, in my opinion, and I'm not picking on, you know, the consultant that did that or anything, I'm just, just broadly. What do you do with an assessment when you know all the problems, but you don't have the, the guide uh, for potential movement forward, right? And so that was one of my criticisms um, of of that original plan was that there was no. Conversation about, okay, great, we've got all this information, we understand the issue, what do we do with it? Um, and so I think that, that was the overarching um, purpose of this project was to identify potential pathways forward. Could we have done more in terms of the density analysis, in terms of community engagement, um, in terms of understanding some of these. These issues that have come up specifically, you know, with, with areas like the Dog Park. Um, or areas like um, the Longs Peak area that was highlighted in the, in the project, yes. We weren't aware of covenants. We weren't aware of covenants that were already, that, that were recorded. Um, this all came to light as the plan got pushed out, right? So. Of course, it's important to understand those things. Um. The Dr. Bop, um, opportunities, I think are, are, are things that we've wrestled with. Do we highlight them? Um, should we highlight them? Is there even potentially a, a path? Um, I, I would suggest that some folks that are a little concerned about. Uh, or not little, I, I don't mean to belittle the, the, the concern there, uh, that are concerned with that specifically and, and. Understandably so. I'm not arguing against that at all. Um, I, I would suggest that you engage with the planning commission. Um, because the planning commission kind of wrestled with this idea of, well. Are there innovative techniques to potentially make some of those properties, um. Buildable in the future, uh, now that we know, uh, some of the things that we know, that kind of thing. So I don't want to dive too deep into that, but just some suggestions there. Um, I think in terms of scope, um. The, the highest charge was to figure out some potential strategies to move forward with and what the potential policy mechanisms were. Um. In terms of the density analysis that went on, um, our starting point was the interactive map. It was those, uh, those comments, um. Related to develop here or don't develop here. Um, and I understand the concern about the, the anon- anonymity. Of the folks that, um, responded. I would say they're only slightly anonymous. On the backend, we do. Uh, the, the software does track IP addresses and we cross-referenced locational information that we were able to. Obtain on those, uh, on those IP addresses. Obviously not pushing it out to the public, not naming names, anything like that, but it gave us a better understanding of. What, what the comments looked like coming from within the municipal, municipal boundaries versus those that were coming out and. Honestly, um, a lot of them were, I would say a majority of them were inside, well, well above ninety percent. And, uh, a majority of them were from the same person. So you might get six comments from the same person, eight comments from another person. Up to twelve comments from another person. So. There was some of that that had to, had to be kind of considered as we were looking through, uh, the comments on the density analysis. Um. I don't know. What else can I, can I offer?
I think that's, that's great. Thank you, Derek. Thanks, Derek.
Sure.
Um, do you want me? To try to address the comments?
Well, we would be here a long, long time. But let's, but I see some. Let's talk about trends. So let's talk about the confluence and the Dr. Bob. Lots.
Well, first of all, it, um. I want to reiterate what Derek said. That was not the one thing proposed. I was shocked is probably usually these were. Um, when I heard that was even brought up in this, because as the floodplain administrator, I'm always looking at how to. You know, prevent or. Improve safety, um, in the flood plains. So I was really surprised that it came up as a suggestion. And then, um. I, I have thought about it a lot since it came up. And the thing that I think has maybe changed, I totally understand and respect what you're saying about the neighbors that left. I don't feel like the town forced anyone to leave in their own conditions night have. You know, everyone had three choices. Stay and do nothing. Elevate. Or be bought out. And so it was purely voluntary. There was certainly no. Coercing from the town. Um. I, I also saw the trend that many of you mentioned. A lot of people have passed. In the last ten years. And it is a concerning, concerning statistic to me, and I'm sure the stress of all of that led to it. Um, as I've thought about it more, one thing that has changed since all of those agreements were signed. Is that the flood maps were updated. I don't think we should consider any parcels in a floodway. Absolutely not. Those in the one hundred year zone, that one percent zone. You know, I'm getting building permits every day and approving them for people to build in one percent zones. People are doing it all the time. Every day. But we make them built to a different standard. Now, what is, what is kind of interesting is that. A large partial, portion of the west. Half of the confluence, the west third of the confluence. Has actually now gone into the point two percent or out of the floodplain completely. No, they're not you, not you, Pam. Um, but, and so, you know, maybe if, if the intent is to try to find creative solutions. Maybe it's worth, you know. I'm going to sign those documents along with you. Okay, so I totally understand that type of responsibility we all have when we sign those. Um. You know, is there a possibility we should go to FEMA? I mean, I'd have to go all the way up to the federal level. And say the flood maps have changed. There are people that are not even in the floodplain anymore. Would you consider? Rehabbing those, you know, letting, I probably, we first of all, would have to buy them back at the value we purchased them. The person who owned them would have to be a willing seller. If there's currently houses there. Um, we would do an amendment to the Dr. Bob to allow that, and that would improve all public process. Um. But I, I don't think. That. Section in the five hundred or no floodplain at all. Should be off the table necessarily. I think we need to talk about it. But. I don't think we should entertain anything in the floodway or the flood. Even the hundred year without starting with the fringes first that are no longer in the plane. That's just my opinion as a floodplain administrator. And knowing what we signed. But I do think it was a creative option. Whoever brought it up, I think it was planning commission. I don't know who even brought it up. It wasn't me, okay? Um, but I think it's a creative solution for those that are no longer in the floodplain. Maybe. But I think everything brought up tonight. I don't know that it necessarily has to be removed from the plan because I think these are all. What he was saying is the intent was to find creative solutions. To our housing, need for housing diversity, and I think they've done that. It's not saying we're going to do any of them. They would all have very significant processes involved with them. As you guys know, any development. They either require a vote. A rezoning, uh, you know, infrastructure review, whatever it might be. So, you know, none of these. If the plan is accepted. This isn't something the board's going to adopt and follow. This is just accepting. An agreement, uh, accepting a plan by an outside neutral party, okay? Um, I do, I think, I'm glad that everybody showed up tonight. I wish it would have been earlier in the process because the grant is now run out. So if the board chooses that you want them to do more work, we will have to pay for that as the town. And, um, see if they have the ability, you know, to add to the scope.
Well, and I.
So that's something you guys are going to talk about.
The, the board too, you know, this is a work product.
Yeah.
And so the town owns this work product and the board could decide to add an addendum.
Sure.
An appendix, a preface.
Yep.
Um, outlining.
So that's one thing I, I think about the confluence, um. Pam had asked about, uh, what did it mean to leverage the newly created open space to allow for other housing needs? Um, I don't remember that exact specific statement when we were doing the Dr. Bob. But I think what that means. Is that as we came up with creative ideas. In the confluence of how to use those parcels, you know, community gardens and an outside classroom and all the things that didn't require infrastructure. Um. Could we leverage then other areas in town? That the town has to do housing. And I, I remember at one time, it's about as unpopular as this process is. There was talk about what about the whole west side of Sandstone Park? Why don't we make that into three-story apartments? That's terrifying to think about, right? But it was somebody's idea because it's very underutilized on the west end. And we could move those amenities elsewhere. Same as the dog park. We have ten acres of dog park land. That. Is utilized by a sector of our community. It's out of the floodplain. It's very developable. We can move the dog park to a confluence buyout and have two smaller ones, one for big dogs and one for little dogs. I. You gotta get creative here if we want affordable housing. Or not even affordable. I'm going to say attainable housing. I'm going to say just a variety of housing.
Yeah.
We are seeing more and more. Baby boomers. Retire and they no longer need their three to five thousand square foot houses. They want twin homes. They want fifteen hundred square feet. We have no, none, zero. Of that type of housing. So they leave lines. So, you know, this isn't just about meaning everything that is mentioned here has to be affordable. We need affordable, attainable. We need a variety of types. So I think what was. Pam, from my recollection, when they said leverage the newly created open spaces so that you could use other land, that's what they were meaning. And then there was a question of what is the inventory of town owned land? I'm going to kind of go around.
Sure.
Someone asked that. We do have it. I'm happy to share it. That town owns about thirty-five, forty parcels in town. They're all little corners and pieces and. Outlets attached to other things. There's really only a few. That are even developable and they almost all are park space. Which. As you hear, a lot of people don't want to use that, you know, and it would require an election to do that too. So as we hear, we all love our community. Nobody wants it to grow exponentially, I don't believe. Um, three hundred and forty-two units over twenty-seven years. Is lower than what we've done the past. Three decades. It's less. Some in the decade of twenty. Two thousand to twenty-ten, there were almost five hundred units added. In the next decade between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty, it was over three hundred. So to look at three hundred and forty-two over twenty-seven years. And looking at places that's appropriate, probably east. Probably density by ADUs in Old Town. There's all sorts of HOA restrictions unless those state changes those rules. I think we're talking about very small number of units in a large variety of places. I, I don't think we're talking about. You know, someone had said four hundred units on Boskens. For. That was brought up and I was like, that is not going to fly in lines. That is not what anybody wants. We want just. Little houses for people to work, especially if we get a hotel. The workers got to live here or there's no incentive to work here. So we've got to figure out some strategies.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to address water sewer.
Please.
And Aaron, please jump in. And the board already knows this. We have a very healthy water portfolio. We have enough water right now. To service three hundred and forty-two more homes. Units. Units.
Well, we have the requirement to add water.
Yes.
I would say.
But I mean, when people, you know, we already own it.
We, for three hundred and forty-two new service connection?
No, not necessarily each a service connection.
Okay.
But I mean, we own. When we, someone had made a comment that when we did our plan. Oh, I think it was written to the record, Ian Miller. That when we wrote the plan, it was considered for what we have. That is not accurate.
Yeah.
When we, when we did our water plan and what the water we own right now. We have enough to do full build out of the whole eastern corridor. And improve increased density in town. So that is an inaccurate statement. Same with the wastewater. The wastewater plant is currently built to build out all of the eastern corridor. Okay, so. Those two things actually residential development can actually improve. Our water and sewer rates because we have a few more houses to divide those costs by. We have plenty of capacity to do both. So that's a misnomer that's out there. That needs to get practice and gets brought up a lot. Fire. Very real, very, very real, um, concern that is a top priority of this board. Um. What I can tell you about that is that. The town is taking very active steps to do what we can within our town limits. The risk comes from all of the open space around us. It comes from above Long's Peak. It comes from above Stone Canyon. It comes from above Ewald. It comes from Lions Valley. Lions Valley Estates. Unless we want to spend tax lions money. On theirs, it's really. An issue of dealing with the county.
Yeah.
And what are your wildfire mitigation efforts that will spread to the town? So it's very real. And yes, evacuation plans are being prepared by the fire department. Actually, tonight they're meeting with Lions Valley Park. I think that's why no one is here.
Mm-hmm.
To talk about their evacuation strategies. We need to do that with every neighborhood here in town. We really do.
Yeah.
And, but I, I need you to know in town. And the fire department tells me this, it doesn't matter if we mitigate the Martin Parcel or we mitigate. The area at the really the crux of the confluence. That's not where it's going to spread. We have hydrants. We have green space. We have. Fighting capabilities in town. It's the fire that's going to spread by wind. On the open space around us. So we need to get active there. And we need to get the strategies in place for. Um, evacuation. Um, the only other one I, I think that I had, um. Was some, oh, uh, Rob, right at the very beginning. What is, what do we want as a town? And what is our nature? And I think for the board. As, as I worked with you through the comp plan, the comp plan. Has captured. What is our character? What do we want to be? What do we want to look like? What do we, you know, what's reasonable as an expectation as a community? So. I don't think that that's not captured in this document because the comp plan captured that. Um. But I do think, and we all know this, we've all said it ourselves, we were all lucky enough to get a place here. And once you're here and you love it, you want to close the gates. But. But things do change and we do have to support our downtown businesses, you guys. We, if we lose our main street because no one can live or work here. Um, we will become just a veteran community and cost, housing prices are just going to continue to go up. We need. We need solutions and I think that's what Derek and his team were really looking at is let's get creative here. Um, because something has a covenant now, doesn't mean. It can't be removed or renegotiated. You know, um, I heard about school district. We need to open our eyes. We almost lost our schools. Over fifty percent of our students commute in. There is plenty of capacity. In our school district for our kids. That can't be an argument really. So.
Thank you.
I, I just, I'm, I'm, thank you for the opportunity to clarify some of those things. Um. I really think it's now Derek and how, what do you want the plan to be massaged to before you either accept it or not? Because Dola gave us just this one more.
Well, right, so, and we took this one month extension and just to reiterate. We asked for this one month extension so that we could have this meeting after the holidays when people could attend. And participate. So I want to make that super clear. And I'm going to, I'm going to kick off, um, for the board comments here. Um, so I would say that what we do is we accept that the work product from, um, Derek's company's perspective is complete. And we talk maybe at our next board meeting about adding an appendix or a preface to it. Um, so, so that's my suggestion. Um. What I want to say is first I want to, is Kitty still here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Give us two questions and I would like to answer them.
Yes.
What are the plans for the confluence? None.
None.
Zero. Are we planning to change Dr. Bob? No. There are no plans to do that. Um, I had somebody contact me today asking about. Eight hundred new housing units to be built above Long's Peak. There is so much misinformation running around and I'm so glad, thank you so much for being here. To tell us what you think. And to hear what the facts are about this. Um, I'd like to point out, and I think Victoria said it, but I want to say it really specifically, when it comes to parks and open space. In order to change the zoning of parks and open space, the entire town has to vote on it. So that's not a zoning change that the board can make. So just to be super clear, um, we're not doubling or nobody's talking about doubling population. What we want is a diversity of housing types. In a diversity of places.
Yeah.
So nobody's talking about building three hundred units above Vasquez. Or in the confluence or in Long's Peak, that's that's not even on the table. Um, so I hope that helps set your minds at ease and um and I think some other board members have some things to say. Trustee Edding, start with you and then.
Okay, so yeah, we don't want this to go all night, so I'll I'll be brief, I'd like to go back to the comments I made before, um. Let me start by saying I was on the PCDC for about ten years and then now on the board. And one thing we had never done is discussed what is an acceptable growth rate for the town? We'd never framed it that way. And that's why I really appreciated this report, and when I started doing the numbers and saying. You're actually calling for a one point two percent increase. Annually, like wow, that's low and we still will never meet it. We will never get three hundred and fifty more houses in your absence of the uh eastern corridor in the next twenty five years, even if we tried. We could maybe do half of that, so now you're talking about a point zero six percent growth rate. If you look at Colorado's growth rate, we're we're like a third to maybe a quarter of Colorado's growth rate. Now, I don't want a two percent growth rate, I don't want a three percent growth rate, but I also know a zero percent growth rate is not an option. We're either gonna have, first of all, we'll get no more federal grants. Um, the state's gonna take everything away or we're gonna go the way of California, California, we all know, they outlawed single family. Um, zoning, period, nobody in the state can do it. So we have a little bit of like a moral responsibility. To accept some level of growth and we know. Laverne would accept some level of growth because she didn't cut us out in nineteen seventies and she could have. Possibly, so. If we could all just collectively just. Hold our breath, just. Relax and say, can we shoot for a point zero eight percent growth rate? Can we all live with that and find some way to do that? Without wrecking the place, I I think we can do it if we all are just talk to each other and. And and we and we find the different ways of doing it. So. I'm pretty much good with this document, I don't think the document has to be perfect. I don't even know what it means to accept it because we're not gonna vote, we're just gonna say we're done, right?
No, we would bring forth a resolution.
Oh, it will be a resolution.
Accept it, yeah, we have to provide that to the state.
We have to provide that to the state, um, I'm totally good.
Tonight because we knew there was gonna be.
I'm totally good with this document being all over the place and giving us everything, but there's things in here no board would ever vote for. And um, yeah, the Dr. Bobs are are a good thing, um, there's other things in here. Um, I don't agree with at all, but I have no uh no. Qualms saying, hey, I'm just gonna vote for it, put it. As a resource that someone can think about in the future, um, but it doesn't mean we're gonna do any of it. Um, so, I mean. Those are my thoughts and and again, I hope as a community, we can. We can coalesce around a one percent growth rate if we can all agree that that's just morally the right thing to do. I'll stop here.
Thank you, uh Mayor Procha.
Yeah, um, first off. I would love every single one of you would run for the board trustee. And I appreciate all of the input and this was so constructive. And it means a lot and so thank you for every voice that showed up tonight, um. In order to expedite the resolution, because I know that we are on a deadline and listening to everything, I think that if we are going to look at this holistically. There are things that we have. That need to be referenced in the appendix, the appendix has some good information in here that has nothing. I I you know, that that that. Isn't call uh Lions Colorado related? So that's information that we already have, so I'd like to just list them off so that when we get to resolution, perhaps they can already be in there. And we can move quickly. The Trestle site analysis that was provided, um, that I believe was the post flood housing needs assessment.
No, two separate documents.
Two, then I would like reference for both of whatever those two are.
Yeah.
Um, because I think that's historical information. That needs to be included and considered for future boards ten years from now. I believe that we need to include a list of what our current municipal codes are, I'm not gonna really read them or in detail, but. Municipal code sixteen three two six zero C two, I believe that references the prohibiting use on town land. Um. Municipal code sixteen one sixty, that's the private deed and restrictions, I think that's in reference to HOAs. Municipal municipal code sixteen fifteen seventy, parks and open space having to go to a boat. So I think those should be in the reference, I'd like to see Dr. Bob. In the reference. Um, and that way. If none of us are here in twenty years before this plan is supposed to be complete. Um, people do have the voices that we've heard tonight and the documentation that we've already. Done, um, and actually come then. Three years of work, anyway, um, so. That's all I just wanted to really kind of say that that's information that needs to be included in this. Thank you.
Trustee Dasty.
Um, yes, I also want to reiterate how thankful I am to have all of these opinions, I'm dying to know everybody's solution, to be honest.
I know.
Um, I can't wait till we get to that part, um, and actually that's what I appreciate in this plan, I appreciate their strategies put forth. We were able to discuss them at the Housing and Human Services Commission and our chair here Kay will be able to expand on those later in her report, but. You know, just from um my perspective as a liaison with the Housing and Human Services Commission. We've, you know, this past year, we spent a lot of time. Helping um local residents who live and work here. Who are trying to come back. From the flood, um, find housing in Lions and we have had several boards, I believe four before us. Work on finding a solution. And it took so much effort and so much time to build forty units. And here, honestly, the short term goal that I see. Is three units per year over the next three years. And I would love to know where can we possibly build those? We're talking about three.
Yeah.
Units over the next three, every year for the next three years, we're talking about nine, maybe ten homes. And yes, we're gonna have to work really hard and get creative. About where we're going to build these homes. But if we want to keep. People working in our community, if we want people to live in our community. We're gonna have to at least start there, we have to start somewhere. Forty units that we just spent ten years figuring out, that's not gonna cut it, it's not enough. We had at least three people show up to our informations, information sessions at the library who are looking for one bedroom apartments. Just so they can stay here, so they can reside here. The homes we just built in uh Lions Valley townhomes, there are no one bedrooms. We are out thirty one bedrooms, we don't have that inventory. Where are they gonna go? That is what we're. Wrestling with here. And we all love our community and we all want what's best for our community, we hear you. And I hear this every single time we're together, we meet, I hear it from staff. I think we all have the same goal in mind, we want a really great community that we love, we love our community, we all want to stay here and. Is there room to include everybody? There has to be. And I realize that there's not gonna be a perfect solution for everybody, I get that, there're gonna have to be some difficult decisions. But ultimately, we have to do what's best for our community. We have to think of everybody in our community. Where are they gonna live? How are we gonna keep them here? We lost ten percent of our housing ten years ago. We didn't even rebuild ten percent of our housing. Of the ninety homes, we've built forty. For me, we're out fifty already, we're at a deficit.
And that took ten years.
And that took ten years. And here we can come into some funding. Through proposition one, two, three. For land banking or or maybe a town planner, I don't know, we we're gonna come into some kind of funding just by. Promising that we can find room to build three homes per year. Over the next three years. I mean, I believe in Lions and I believe we can do this. I believe there's a way to come together and I believe there's a way to find a solution and get creative and be inclusive and and keep our diversity. In our population, I mean, we have to. We we just, I don't think we have a choice not to. This is the way forward and I don't know that way is gonna be tricky and it's gonna be messy and it's not gonna be straightforward and here we are. Here we are, this is democracy, we're having a discussion, we're hearing you, we've taken public. You know, feedback and comments, we've spent nine months looking at, you know, assessing the situation, that's. Housing needs assessment, we're assessing our needs, there is a need, there's been a need since the flood, probably since before the flood, I think the flood exasperated it. Right? But we have to think of everybody who lives and works here and how do we house them? And I know of at least thirty people who are still waiting for a one bedroom apartment and. We have to, we have to figure it out. So thank you for showing up and yes, I think we need to accept it and we need to get looking at those strategies. Need to focus on the strategies.
I think you, yeah.
I'm a little passionate about housing.
Trustee Delman, do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, I think that we should not have to stick to a. Uh, regular a percentage like one percent. Because there's a very limited number. Of buildable places in town. Um, the town does need growth. But there's, it's hard and I don't think. The parks and the Dr. Bob should be places. That we should build, I do think the ADUs are a very good. Solution to. Uh, bringing more people in and not. Crowding out. What we all know as the town that we. Want to move to and that we love.
Thank you very much. Trustee Elson.
First, I wanna echo what Mayor Protem said, thank you everyone for coming and there still is time to get a packet. If they do what the twenty second?
They're due the twenty, fifty, ten figures, that's all.
If you want to come up here and have fun like us on the board.
Right, you don't have enough packets out to have an election.
Anyway, so. But I also agree, we do need something, I think we should accept it the way it is, there are restrictions for everything, I I. Agree certain areas we shouldn't build, but this is, this is not something we're gonna use to say this is where we're building, it's just a, this is a wish list. Essentially, that's how I look at it and everything we have in. With our codes and all that will dictate where we can and can't build.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
You know, when you first learn to ride a bicycle, your biggest problem is you can't go too slow or you fall over. And you can't go too fast or you fall over. And fortunately, you have somebody, usually your dad or your mom. Behind you kind of holding on to the back of that seat. And you're sure they're holding on to it. In reality, they've let go and you're figuring out on your own. I love the Kentucky writer Wendell Berry. Who's convinced that the only thing that makes this nation work is community. What I just saw here.
Yeah.
I really didn't disagree with much of anything that was spoken tonight. But I sit up here about three inches above. Where we have to hold on to the back of the bike. We have to figure out. How to financially allow this town to remain. As viable as it is. As exciting. As that role is, so I'm excited on. But it's what you've tasked us to do and we'll do it. We'll be responsible. We care about this place. I'm also terribly concerned. When it comes to community. And Wendell Berry would definitely be with me on this one. I grew up in Appalachia, eastern Kentucky, twenty five percent unemployment in my home county. Most of my friends came from abject poverty. Some of the richest wealthiest people I know. None of those folks get to live here. Because we don't. Allow them. To live here. You live here if you make a really good income. You live here if you're gonna have a really comfortable retirement. So ADUs, yeah, are they a permanent solution? Probably not. Do we need to find more opportunities for people not like us here? Well, if we want to be fully human, I think we do. But again, if we go too fast. We fall over, if we go too slowly, we'll we fall over, I'm I'm probably with trustee Edding. I think something under one percent. You know, when when we look at the past growth. We had open land, you haven't noticed there's a lot of foothills around here, we ain't got much more open land. So it's not gonna be much growth unless you put up eighteen story buildings. I don't think you'd find six board members in the whole town who would opt for. Big apartment complex. I think we have some flexibility in the eastern corridor to do some more. Interesting things than than we have here in the heart of town. But we're always gonna have those kinds of limitations, but some kind of growth. It's the only way we're going to be able to be socioeconomically a bit. More varied than we are. And I appreciate your passion, I appreciate your love for this place. We all feel the same way, that's why we're here. That's why we do this forty eight times in a term. And we take seriously every last word we hear tonight.
Yes.
Want you to know. That's all.
Thank you. So thank you, everybody, um, I'm gonna close public comment, we're going to take a break. And then move on to our next agenda item. Um, which is the ADU, first reading of the ADU order, so we're very, very welcome to stay. Um, as long as you like, I'd like to say, so the very bitter end and pick up your packet on the way out, I'm sure. Administrator Simonson would be happy to help you. So um, so we'll take. Let's take five or ten minutes, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, yeah, thank you very much, everybody, yeah.
It's like cold rain's a bit.
Like there is. There is. Let's move on to ordinances and public hearings. The first reading of ordinance eleven fifty-six. Do we have a staff report?
We have planner painter on that line to give the staff list.
Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Rogan, Mayor Protemp Barrow, members of the board. I'm going to share my screen, bring up ordinance one one five six. This is amending the lines municipal code to allow detached accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in the R one, R two, R two A, E for estate and state county, as well as agricultural residential districts. This is, this ordinance is looking at trying to make the use easier for the review process alone for a detached ADU. Currently, under sixteen dash ten dash seventy, under accessory dwelling units. Uh, B two, it currently states detached ADUs are subject to a conditional use. C for standards, one, district permitted, district permitted as attached use by right or as a detached subject to a conditional use. And then eight, under C, is conditional use for review criteria for detached ADUs. We want to amend all those to remove the conditional use to all be, well, stated as under B two, a permitted and subject to administrative review under C, standards one, to an administrative review, and eight, a review criteria for detached ADUs. The um this would only be a review itself. Nothing else is changing. Building permits, floodplain permits, design standards, setbacks, as well as a yeah, and then the setbacks would be not changed at all. There'd be no change to any other forms of the LMC, just the review process alone. The conditional use process can take anywhere from sixty days to even ninety days, depending on a complete packet. Or uh current documentation, ownership documentation can delay this process, and with those delayed processes can also become an inconvenience on the resident or the citizen just by obtaining materials. And with the way our economy is nowadays, that's been pretty pricey. Uh, staff has been working with the planning commission. And we have been trying to figure out a way to encourage residents to come forward. We know there's a lot of unaccounted-for ADUs and many residents who would like to pursue having a detached ADU. But they find that the conditional use review process alone is stressful, and it does deer them away, and it does scare them away quite often. And alone the cost, I think that was another thing. It's roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars for a conditional use with a staff review of only being a hundred and fifty with a land use application that would save a resident about roughly six hundred dollars. And the review time itself should take anywhere from twenty to thirty days on a staff level review. Again, the conditional review does require the PCDC with a public hearing. The first hearing through the Board of Trustees, as well as a second hearing with a public hearing, combined with that. And again, as long as the packet is complete, it could roughly be done in sixty days. But again, sometimes they are dragged out, and it does unfortunately push away some residents from wanting to pursue this. Uh, Boulder County and including lines is probably one of the few localities and municipalities around the country that still does require conditional use. It's typically a use by right and a permitted use elsewhere, so it's really hard to have deals out of towners that move into lines and are in charge of our processes and how they work. And we're just trying to, overall, really wanted to make this a better experience for the residents and try to encourage more housing. Again, this has been talked about on the comp plan, and what was produced in the staff report and the ordinance as far as the housing crisis. I think we're all very aware of that, and it's on everybody's minds right now. This will be an opportunity to provide more housing to a certain degree, long-term rentals. Family members, you got elderly parents who need places to live, and a detached ADU is probably one of the best spots. We have lots of land. We are, we have parcels of land where people don't want to do anything with their backyards, but they love to put a detached ADU in there, but they just do not want to go through the process. The process is intimidating for some. And staff in the planning commission feel that taking it to an administrative review would be a more comforting process, and it would not have to require everyone's time for public meetings. Including that it'd almost be considered a use by right. And I stand for questions.
Thank you very much. And and I would like to recognize that trustee Williams brought this forward. Hmm, I don't know how long ago, a very long time ago. So thank you for doing that. I'm sorry it's taken this long, but it has moved through the process.
I think you just commented, this is a strategy recommended in the yes, housing, whatever we're going to call it.
Yep, the housing. Yes.
Document.
It is. Okay. And um, okay, so questions for staff? Go ahead.
That actually was my one question in terms of timing of this. We have not adopted, oh, we have not accepted that plan yet. But we want this to qualify as one of our things. So if we were, I know we're in first reading. But if we were to consecutively do second reading approval and adopting the plan on the same evening.
Yes.
Is that still qualify, or should we?
We consulted, BHI consulted with DOLA, and they are fine.
Okay.
Um, if this comes first, it will count toward it.
Okay.
Um, but I do have one other possible way to we may need a very short special meeting on the twenty ninth. And if so, we could adopt this at the same time, so you're giving it its full attention. And then um the second thing will come after. If we added this to the agenda, we have a, we have a situation with an ADU that is very, very time sensitive and um so if if we dealt with that on the twenty ninth with the housing, that would solve two problems.
Okay, I just really want to make sure
Yeah.
that that we make the timing correct.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all my questions.
I was concerned about that, too. I'd be more comfortable to adopt the plan first, just in case, but.
Yeah, yeah.
He was told by DOLA that that will not be a problem.
Okay. Okay.
Questions for staff? Will there still be a notification process to neighbors? Or will that go away?
For administrative review, that would go away. That would be only for the conditional use review.
Sure. Drystat, do you have a comment on that? I'll just put you on the spot.
My impression was that it would stay because that's
Yeah.
one of the Yeah, the requirements would be reinforced by staff as opposed to by the CCD.
Okay.
Well, that's where it gets a little sticky, though, because now you're going to have, if if you have to mail the people around.
Yeah.
And then they have a chance to respond. That's the reason we did the condition, that's the reason we did the conditional use review. They they respond to you personally then, or?
Yeah, they would respond to staff with any concerns. It was my understanding. I thought that, I thought the neighbors were going to be notified. The only thing that was changing is that would be the two public hearings in front of
The only thing that was changing is it would be the two public hearings in front of the planning commission and the board.
Attorney Dimon, that?
That, I do say and corrected that we would continue with the three hundred buff foot buffer radius to each property. For mailing and references, I apologize about that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, attorney Dimon, did you have something to add?
Oh, I was gonna add about, you know, a question from someone I heard it was now was by what are you gonna do if there's no a public hearing to show up to to address your concerns? And what we've done traditionally is whoever the lead planner is, puts out their name on the on the notification saying if you have any questions, comments, concerns, contact me. Um, is how we dealt with elsewhere, where there's these types of administrative review. I I do think that the notification requirement, I was trying to search quickly, search the requirement in the code, but I do think it remains as part of the the standards. Is it really is just that changing it from a conditional to the administrative review?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I I do want to be sure as this moves forward, and maybe this is for second reading, that if the staff were to receive significant concerns from neighbors, that we always have the ability to still ask for um, review by either the planning commissioner, the board.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's quite.
I just want to make sure because I don't want, I I want to reassure people that if this goes to administrative review, it doesn't, the neighbors still have a little input. And if they're not happy, you know, if people don't like our decision, there's a way to take it up.
Does it, does that need to be written into this ordinance?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. There's nothing currently that would lend itself to that, but I think you could easily create a new you know, section nine or something saying that and something we could, you know, look at and propose at the next board trustees meeting. That it can be staff has the ability to refer it to the board of trustees. I probably wouldn't do it both, you know, there's a lot of process. I would probably pick one or the other. Or trustees or or PCDC um, for review, that's up to the board trustees.
In a very short timeframe, like ten days, because the whole purpose of this is to speed it up, so. But you know, you don't want a thirty day amendment period, you see that person's still waiting, am I going to be building this or not? So
Yeah.
It it's all meant to expedite.
Got it.
But I do want the ability that if we get an application that gets a lot of feedback, that we can reach out to a higher group of elected officials to make that decision.
All right, any other questions?
That raises one more. So if, let's say you say no to this person.
Yes, do they have the ability?
The ability to appeal.
Yes.
That still stands.
It should, yes.
Great, yes, that's what I care about too.
Brandon's reviewing.
These are good questions, you know, things have been brought up previously. There should be the ability, there's a general appeal provision in the code that says that any um, decision by the administrator or staff can be appealed, I think that's we'd rely upon, but we can double check that and bring that answer back in the next meeting.
Right.
We'll add those in for second meeting.
Um, yeah, I'm going to make an amendment eventually. Um, okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Trustee, what's your motion?
My motion is to approve ordinance eleven fifty six upon first reading. An ordinance of the town of Lyons, Colorado amending section sixteen dash ten dash seventy of the Lyons Municipal Code to allow detached accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in R one, R two, R two A, E, E C and A residential districts.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, I would like to propose an amendment. Um, I would like to amend section C, I believe, um, to include a statement that staff has the ability to refer to PCDC in the event of a significant community input and that PCDC must respond within ten days. Is there a second to my amendment?
My second.
Any discussion about my amendment?
Yes.
Why PCDC and not straight to the board of trustees?
That was my question.
Okay. I, well, um, that's a good question. Um, I think PCDC has the capability of, you know, of making this decision. They have the expertise. Is there? Go ahead.
Uh, one is a a conditional use review shouldn't be capricious, like, oh, I like it, I don't like it. There should be a list of things that you got to do, so it should be somewhat systematic. And since it's systematic, I completely think the PCDC can do it. So I don't think it's an arbitrary thing.
Then does it have to have a date, a certain number of days?
Yeah, I would, I would like to ask if you consider fourteen days only because both of the groups meet every fourteen.
Yeah.
And if there's any type of ten day notice or something we need to do, we can.
Then, yeah, that would have to be a special meeting.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so, so my amendment would be in fourteen days.
Brandon?
Yeah, two things, you know, first, may I suggest that this be a new subsection nine to part C of the
Sure.
As a way of organizing, which would just basically create a new section. And my my clarifying, I guess, my second comment was, forget my question, was um, that most places do conditional uses through their planning and zoning commission or their PCDC. And our code is very strange. I know it was intentional and and the number of appeals that go to the board of trustees. Most places for these types of things, um, it stays with planning commission. That's not at all uncommon, as I want to make that comment. And then third, um, in terms of the referral to the PCDC by staff, um, is, would we also want to ship appeals there as well as it, or just be like if staff feels that they can't make a decision, they can refer it to PCDC or we also want to say if someone has an adverse decision, they can appeal to the PCDCs. I think currently the appeal process goes to the town administrator or hearing officer. It may make sense to send it to the PCDC as an appeal as well.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Applicant can appeal a decision of the administrator to the planning commission.
Yeah.
With the important.
Yeah.
With the important, yes, okay.
It can either be referred by the um, administrator or their designee or um, in the event of an adverse decision appealed um, to the PCDC.
Right, okay. Shall we vote on the amendment?
We have a discussion.
We just said about the amendment.
We'll give image.
There we go.
Dolores, if you can't see that, it is unanimous.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and now discussion.
I I just want to say, I was on the PCDC for eight years, we had public hearings and it was ADUs that twice bought people in with lawyers. And in one case, um, a couple brought a lawyer in to defend it because the people in the confluence were all completely against it. Then once on Reed Street, the neighborhood brought a lawyer in because they were completely against it. So these can be very contentious. However, I love the way what we did this is you can appeal to the PCDC if it's not, because a lot of them weren't contentious at all. And so they didn't need that. And I love the idea, it only goes to the PCDC and times are changing. Uh, it's not ten years ago, we are leaving R one, so I think it's great.
Uh, any other comments?
Yes, I love that we have found a somewhat easy, straightforward solution that is going to create more housing. And I know people who are waiting, they want to create ADUs, I've heard them, they're even on the housing commission. And it's just been too complicated, too lengthy with all the arguments you brought up, and this is really going to help bring them, bring those forward. So yes, let's encourage it.
Great, great, and thank you again, trustee Williams.
Thank you, trustee.
Okay. Oh.
Now we voted for. There we go. Uh, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Um. Do you have one, yeah, to write a staff comment I thought might be important just to clarify? That that they still, detached ADU, if someone is building, will still need to get a building permit.
Yes.
Will still need to go through all that because there was a comment commenting to the PCDC, oh, well, this is great, we don't have to do anything.
Oh, no, no, yeah. I don't think that's anybody's understanding on this board.
No.
Okay. All right, um.
Really noted.
Clerk Vasquez, would you like to read consent into the agenda or should Administrator Simon send?
I can take care of it, mayor.
Did we, sorry, interrupted, we vote on the
The ordinance is amended, yes, it was unanimous.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I'm and yeah.
Thanks for keeping us honest, yeah. Okay, consent agenda, please.
All right, item one is resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, a resolution of the town of Lyons, Colorado, ratifying the decision of the board of trustees on January second, twenty twenty four to waive certain development review fees for the Lyons Emergency Assistance Fund LEAF. Item two are the December twenty eighth, twenty twenty three special board of trustees meeting minutes. Item three are the January second, twenty twenty four regular board of trustees meeting minutes. And the last item are the January accounts payable.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second? I can, anything anyone would like to remove?
Okay, after the vote. That motion passes unanimously.
You?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, hey Sparks, thank you for sticking it out to give us an HA, an uh, H H S C update.
Thank you. Oh, let me just, um. I I sent the, our comments on the um, housing needs assessments, not a plan, to Victoria, um. Did you want, I didn't go through word by word, so do you want to have me give it to her and then you can get it? The other thing is, um, Derek, bless his heart, saw our comments and gave us some wonderful feedback. Most of it's education that you may already know, but I can also send it to Victoria if you want to see his response to our comments.
Yeah, I think if you would forward that to the board, that would be great.
I will just send that again to you.
You don't have to, I have it right now.
It's going right now. Look at that, we're done. Um, our report, um, I don't, I think I have a copy of it in the packet.
I think so.
They all know. Oh, okay, because you're also going to see it, and this is my end of the review, I just wanted to do everything, um. Obviously, in twenty twenty three, um, the Lyons Valley Town Homes took a lot of our energy. And I gave us a historical review, I think most of which you've heard because I came in the spring or something to tell you what what our plans were. Um. And I I just wanted to reiterate, and you've you've heard this several times from several places, the the intake that we took in helping people apply right off the bat, that one week that we spent all the library taking things in was that we had over thirty people want single bedroom. Yeah. Partnering for that, um, so um, in terms of developmental, development, um, that's, that's easy compared to building what we, this beautiful development. So we just like to keep that in mind. We've got all sorts of ideas for it, but anyway. And just, this is my learning from this whole process was, as beautiful as the town houses are, it would be wonderful to have a development that's truly mixed housing. I don't think it's possible with the funding source, it would screw up everything. But it would be really nice to have a low income, under fifty percent, an affordable, under sixty percent and an attainable slash workforce eighty to one hundred and twenty, because we would not have so many units left empty. Um, it was, it was very heartbreaking. Because at our first meetings, if people say, you can't call us supportive, I can't afford it.
Right.
And they were definitely under sixty percent. It was, it was not a
Yeah.
It's a hell of a workout.
Yeah.
And there were some folks who are, all these folks there, I think are are working and employed, but there are people that were just a bit over, or they're employed. And they're at eighty percent. Um, it would be really nice to have mixed housing.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
I agree.
Um, one of our other tasks, I think, is going to persist is preserving what affordable housing is available. The sewer, two twenty four sewer, I don't know how active that is. One of the residents there is now a resident of Lyons Valley Town Homes, and she just decided that was just the easiest route for her. Um, which means there's a one, there's a two bedroom trailer for rent if anybody knows anyone. But, and that sewer specifically means zoning, but how to address some of our, our affordable that we've got, how to keep it, and I, sewer's a big headache, I have no idea. Um, I attended a meeting via Zoom with this all and all sorts of wonderful people who essentially sort of threw their hands up because all but one rent their trailers, so they are not eligible to buy it.
We're continuing to have talks with the county about that. We're continuing to have talks with the county about that.
I wasn't sure, because David was really pushing people and trying to get people together, and then with his loss, I'm not, I wasn't sure what happened. So, um, a lot of what we do is are responding to community needs. People come to us just like they come to you with great ideas or questions. Um, one of the, we, we researched this year, somebody came and said, um, do we, the kids have any nutritional needs in the summer when they don't get free lunches at school? So, um, one of our members talked to the school administrators and they, our schools have a lot of summer programs, whether it's sports or media, and because we're small, they, they sort of identify who might need this, even if they don't follow by as such, and they're there. So they did not feel there was a need, but they were going to pursue that. Um, and I, I sort of pressed schools to do that because they seem to take care of those kids. Um, we're looking at healthcare services, LEAF obviously is, once they get their their building, um, they're going to be open to having a, an outreach of some sort of some healthcare services, specifically medical. Um, so we're not really pushing that, it's, that would be a hard thing and if they can do it and incorporate it, we'll just support it. You'll notice that we, we have welcomed a full time dentist, so you know, check that box off. Um, the third thing we've done, and this has been on my agenda for like, I think the whole time I've been there, uh, foot care services for seniors, just finding them and what word is, but I finally have information, it it isn't specific to Lyons, but it's access. And so what this has brought up to me, and I presented to our commission for twenty twenty four is how to share the resource information we have with the community in real time. The guide that's, you can get online, and you can do all these things, but there's some things that we, we like to do, so we're you know, we're just starting to brainstorm, maybe having a regular little column in the, or so, and you you know, we could maybe post something on our site, our, our webpage, I don't know, city, but something foot, uh, foot care.
Yeah.
How do you do it? Just zig, zig kind of stuff. Um, we've responded to you when you've asked for our involvement um, on the cop, the cop plan goals, we sort of did that. Um, we attended the PCDC and hot committee on ADUs, which is sort of morphed into you weren't taken out and sorry. Um, and then at least one of us have attended the monthly work group meetings with the um, housing assessment. And we're a lot of new acronyms, but um, it's fascinating, um. It would be fun to to interview them about how they wanted to get this information. Gabe, who was the working, the worker bee for that, that assessment, came and spoke to us and he has, he gave lots of great reviews. Um, an update on that, there was a vulnerable citizens list, you know, but we finally finished contacting the folks and getting them updated information, so that list has been retired. Um, but what we just got this in our January meeting was, I think it was, I can't remember who it was that brought some backpacks that we were thinking of distributing to, you know, put the information in a backpack.
It's an emergency.
Even things like, especially our seniors under emergencies, sometimes we forget who we are or where we live or who our contact is or et cetera. Um, so we're just looking into that, um, to go back.
I remember that from
Yeah, the Red Bank from CML.
Yes.
And we do have two openings, I told a couple people who are here tonight.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Instead of going to be picking a four different.
Well, you can have trustees on this, so. Um, and we're just going to keep the same kind of of priorities in terms of preserving, we're not looking for any anything big, we're still helping to support folks moving into the town homes and whatever they need. Um, it'd be nice when those are, those are done. I was glad to hear the numbers that they had for priority one and two. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Questions?
Okay. You know, if you, if you're not running for the uh, trustee, trustee, I mean, I mean, the, the housing commission would be a nice, slow and we always have cookies.
Hey, there's still
Cookies.
We have cookies. There's still time for him to.
Yeah, so I want some, and we're advisory. She's not.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for Nick?
Thank you for doing.
Thank you so much. Thanks to you and the commission. Really, it really makes a giant difference. So. Um, okay. So now we are going to talk about Summit Housing Sets. Um, I'll kick us off. I believe that there needs to be a safety fence there at least until the remediation is complete. Now. Summit is not on the hook to pay for it. I don't know how much it would cost. I wonder if they would cost share.
They are.
They're, yeah, they'll pay for the fence on our property.
On our properties. So then.
What we were talking about.
Tell me again why it isn't up then?
Haven't got to it. Haven't wanted to. Again, that goes back and forth, right? They. Maned me for pushing them to do it. And then I don't want to hold up them from getting their COs for not getting things done. So we said, yeah, let's get people moved in. But yeah, officially, they probably should have had it done when the project was starting.
Yeah, so there, no, they, they are required to either put it in or give us the money to do it if you still see it paid. The question really is, do you, do you want a fence there? Knowing we're going to start the design. And again, the goal is to get the funding to go right into construction. Or would we rather put the money for. A fence toward the construction? Of the stream bank.
And to me, it's a. The money is one question, but the safety is another question, as people are moving in there and kids are running around there. I mean, that's the whole, I remember the conversation, the conversations that we had with the previous board, and it's seriously a safety concern.
For some people. I, I think it is much more. Sloughed than it was when it was just an eighteen foot drop. It's now this. There's now trees along the whole bottom. And. Our whole community is built around a dangerous river.
Well, that should be true.
So is it enough to do more of a temporary fence with signage? Or do you want just this fence that's just gonna stop on the edges and they're gonna walk around it? When that ten thousand dollar fence could go toward construction? That's just another way to look at it. They, they are on the hook for it. It's just whether or not do you guys want it? If so, what type? Or would you rather they contribute toward the bank being graded?
Any questions?
Yeah.
I have an opinion.
Yeah, please.
So I walked it, and I actually did think that there were a few spots, and I was like, wow. So. I think having a fence is a good thing. And I don't want to see, you know, an orange. Plastic fence, and I don't love the chain link fence, but I was wondering if there could be something. That's more of just a simple. Post chicken wire, like, you know, it's got the square wire. It's not super visible, but.
Things kids like to climb on and sit on.
But.
They do.
And then you have to put some signs on it, you know, do not climb. But we, we have covered. Our, any sense of liability, and if a child goes over that fence. That is a parent child problem. But I feel like we do need to have something. And so I would like to see that there, and I think that Summit should pay for that. I don't think it needs to be the most expensive kind of fence possible. At all. But I don't want it. Orange.
Green?
You know what I mean, that, that synthetic type.
Snow fence.
Yeah, I don't think that's fair.
No, we, we put up, we had a snow fence up there for years when it was a steep slope. And it would blow and move, and then the the bank started eroding. And I don't know if it eroded down or how it went away, but.
Even when they did the last project, they needed to work there.
But, but it is, just, just so you know, if, if it's on the town property, they don't plan to do it. So it's really just a message for own liability, I think, more than it is, the kids are still going to own the fence. You can go down there. And the adults are too. They're excited about it getting graded so they can access the river from there. On public property. To blame on it.
Yeah.
So then it's like, do we go in and just do a basic grade until it's designed? So it's at least. Safe. Or, or. And much cheaper than a million dollars that they're going to come in and rip out all the trees and start over.
There's already that ex kind of material that goes down there.
People use it all the time.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Trustee Dottie?
I'm just wondering what would be the duration of time before that grading would be completed that would make it safe? Like, what timeframe are we looking at?
Well, if we're looking at the funding for the construction phase, you know, I looked at what we. Sent in another letter today to move that forward. You know, I, I don't know. Can they, can they do basic grading now until the design is done?
I don't.
Could we require them to spend their ten thousand dollars instead of a fence to just grade it back to a one before slope?
I don't know that we can grade it without, you know, again, so it's the floodplain permit, I guess, is okay.
It's not in the floodplain.
That is the part we're working on.
The very bottom is.
Down to the bottom.
It's not.
We want to, well, yeah, there is a lot. I don't see how you're gonna grade it. And not be at the bottom to the top. You could try, a lot of it is a walk as a straight.
Let me, let me ask a question. Is there, is there a time constraint? Could we investigate the grading? And what the grading, whether it's possible and what it might cause before we decide on the fence?
I think it's a matter of closing out. What this refers to is closing out Summit's responsibility so they can be done. I mean, I'm, I'm fine if you guys say do a fence. I mean, they have that responsibility, but I think it's gonna just be kind of odd to have a fence. And then it's just.
Let me ask Attorney Gentman from a liability perspective. Do you have an opinion?
You know, I'm hesitant to put something online about whether, oh, this is definitely a liability issue or not. I mean, what you'd be looking at is whether this is a known and dangerous condition. That, you know, a reasonable person wouldn't avoid. And so I, I don't know. I mean, it's a. It wouldn't be without liability, put it that way.
But it won't be without liability with the fence either, if they go around the fence and around the town. I mean, is it.
Do ski resorts have a problem with people ski out of bounds?
And get hurt?
Yeah.
No, because there's a whole Colorado Ski Act that covers liabilities six different ways.
It's, it's an interesting dilemma. I mean, we can put up a fence. I, if they walk around it, they're still, our town property goes all the way to the bottom of the river.
Right.
So if they walk around it and still go on our property. But yeah, or is, or is signs just good enough, Brandon?
Right.
If we put signs every ten.
Yeah, signs would help a lot.
Say, you know, high risk area, stay away or something like.
I, I would like to actually have a fence and signs.
Yeah.
And a, and, yeah. To communicate that you should not be going down there. Whether people pay attention to them or not, I feel like it's what, is what Summit agreed to do. It's a safety measure. How effective it is, I don't know, but at least we're doing something.
I mean, if you put something like. Very dangerous erosion.
Well, it's like.
Ding out.
Are those like electric box signs in Lyons Valley Park?
Or, or whatever we can.
That's a good one. Attorney Gentman, I love that one. The great one.
My, my other question, just briefly. If we're considering doing grading, my question would be whether that would require. You know, an Army Corps permit. For potentially, you know, fill in, fill in the creek.
Well, yeah, all that's gonna be as the design phase of the stream bank project. What we're saying in the meantime, could we bring back the top of the hill closer to the curb line so it's less extreme? And stay out of the floodplains.
You should not even get close to like the, the stream bank, just get the very top of it.
I. I, I still think we should put up the fence and put up signs. Trustee Williams?
Fence and signs, but I am reminded of the Ted Speaker that I worked with last year. Who had slides of all ridiculous signs all over the world, including do not climb this mountain in high heels.
We can come up with some.
Yeah.
Signs. Trustee Gentman?
I guess I, I think signs.
You think no fence signs?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Progen?
I say fence and signs.
I, I gotta be honest, I don't know if I have a strong opinion on this. I just want to say, it does sound like Summit really took a bath on this. And, and I feel about, I feel bad about dragging them through the coals, because I know they did this over COVID and everything got jacked up on them and. I don't, but I don't understand that situation very well. Did they, did they lose money on this?
They did.
By losing in the millions.
Yeah.
I just, okay, can I at least say that makes me feel bad to keep dragging them through the coals here?
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I, I'm sorry you feel like we're dr- dragging them through the coals. I feel like we're.
Yeah.
Asking for what they agree to.
Yeah, yeah. So I worry about safety. Oh, sorry, is it my? Yeah.
No, it's just, I, 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 I get it. And we are asking them to do what they did, but. More pressure we put on them, it's more difficult for them to now go off and do somebody else's affordable housing.
It's a good point.
And I don't want them to go out of this business. And I want affordable housing to someone else, so I just.
I don't know how much difference financially it makes. I mean, they could give us an offer and say only this, but. Maybe they're gonna pay the same amount they would pay for a fence towards the others. So I don't know that it's a financial benefit for them, maybe, but.
Could we do signs and? Just do signs and say, we want you to spend the five or ten grand putting in electric vehicle stations or a community garden for the.
Would that take, would that take a revision of the agreement?
No, it'd be. Addition to, or I mean, or we could say we're fine with a basic fence with signs and. But that, all it says is fence. It doesn't describe the type. So right now they could put up an erosion fence.
Yeah. What do you think, Trustee Dottie?
So I, I do, I am concerned with safety and liability for sure. I'm worried about the safety of our new town residents who might be living on that cul-de-sac. I know that there are families living on the cul-de-sac because it's a close proximity to the playground on the other side. And so. Those are the kids who might not be able to read the signs or the kids who might be climbing the fence. I mean. So. I, and I, and I wonder, I wonder if there's a way to come up with some kind of like. Temporary fence solution. I don't know how long this fence is going to stay up. It sounds like it's gonna take a while for this grading to happen. All the way down to, so that it is a safe option. I don't know if that's a year. I don't know. How long it's gonna take if there's an Army Corps permit involved. Oh, my gosh. So I'm just wondering, is there some kind of temporary fence solution? Because do we want that fence to stay up forever? You know, if it is graded to a safer like slope that kids can make their way down.
It won't have to be removed to do the sloping.
Right, yeah. I, I, I would like the fence to belong to the town.
It's on our property.
So, yeah, so the, we can, so the fence can be removed and, you know, move somewhere else that needs.
Right, right, right. So I guess I'd like to look at temporary fence options that are, can be removed, but that can also stand. I mean, we're not gonna avoid kids climbing on them, but if we could put some signs, not just with verbiage, but also maybe some kind of like icon that shows them that. This is, this is not allowed, like no climbing or something. I'm just thinking of the little ones who can't read. That's, that's all.
Trustee Olson?
I would be fine with signs.
Just saying?
Yeah, just signs.
Okay. So we're pretty split here.
That's why it was a bit difficult one.
I'm all right with signs as long as it's really clear.
Like the one McCollum says, you'll die if you go in there.
That one.
That one.
Certain death.
That's a good one.
So to me, that sign and Attorney Gentman would ask, does that, if you put a sign up that says certain death. Aren't you saying this should be fenced specifically by putting that title?
And if somebody goes there and they don't die, then can they sue you? Full sacrifice.
Sign in the picture.
Okay, so what, how do we feel about? A less expensive, more temporary fence and signs? Just to make it clear that this is a place you should not go.
Right, like there's a barrier. And so it probably will be orange and ugly.
Right.
So that.
But it's temporary.
Telling them a less expensive fence? Are we still asking for something?
I think what we're telling him is a, a less expensive fence and signs is fine. I mean, the point.
Is that they're required to put in a tape fence. And that's the, what we're getting from the previous.
Sure. And, and the point is that we don't want people hurting themselves.
Right.
So.
But there, we all understand there's no guarantee that doing that.
Of course.
Of course.
I mean. Attorney. Attorney Gentman?
So during this conversation, I have taken a look at the Colorado Government Immunity Act and tried to look to see if there's anything in there that jumped out at me as. You know, a potential issue, because the way the CGA works is that, you know, waives are, you know, liability unless there's, you know, gross, you know, negligence. But there are a handful of waivers for six different contexts. And at least my initial read of, of those exceptions is that this wouldn't really fall into any of those, meaning that. We really would only be liable for our gross negligence. So the question is whether not putting up a fence or a sign would be grossly negligent. And to that, that'd be the question. And I think it's really up to, you know, you to think about. I can't answer that question for you. I don't think it's grossly negligent, but, you know, certainly people can make that argument. So I just want to give that context.
I'm, I'm good with the less expensive fence and signs.
So a modest fence. With visible signage.
Yeah.
And hopefully with symbols.
Yeah.
Okay. To be placed strategically enough that it's not gonna fall down if the next section loads.
Yeah.
But. Not so close to the edge that if someone climbs the fence and goes over, it's gonna be even worse. Okay? All right, we'll see what we can come up with.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Trustee reports, Trustee Williams.
Historic Preservation Committee has known that.
A trustee gentleman?
Parks and Rec. They are looking for places where. The, where they can volunteer. For new things. And I guess that's about all.
For the commission to volunteer?
Right.
Ooh, I'll get them all.
The last PCDC meeting was, was working on this ADU ordinance as well as the housing. Recommendation document that we just reviewed today. So that's, they've been busy with those two things. Could I see any?
The last meeting, you guys heard all about the time of use. And Jim's at, up at, well, I don't know, did he go to Nebraska?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, is he gonna go? Okay. So that's the next meeting. So Jim's at the meeting in Nebraska.
Great. Well, and I don't have a huge update because our lovely Chair of the Housing and Human Services Commission was here. To give a report on last year's activities. She's done such a great job steering this committee. I'm so grateful to Kay here. And, and to our, our two members who stepped down, Reagan, Buehler, and Shri Moro. We spent a lot of time at our last meeting. I think that was on the eighth, was it, of. January discussing the, the strategies recommended by the, the Housing Futures Plan. And you reported on those as well. So all I would like to reiterate is that we have two vacancies on the Housing and Human Services Commission. So yes, if you're not running for trustee. Or mayor, feel free to be a commissioner. Have a nice little downgrade. Not downgrade, but I guess a transition off.
Less than.
Yeah. Thank you. Trustee Olson?
Let's see, tomorrow I have the EBC and the EAB meeting. So no updates from those two. Yes, I've seen that's. Last week. They're working on their goals for the year. They wanna work on their goals, present them to us, to make sure that we're working, they're working on what we want them to work on.
Great, great.
They're looking at the old goals and kind of reformatting them. They're, they're working through that.
They're looking at the old goals and kind of reformatting them. They're, they're working through that. Uh, they still want to bring to us about the possibility of acquiring the sustainability coordinator with the next budget.
Agreed.
Or a portion of it. So, so they're working on that. Uh, they want to present it to this board, but I said it might make more sense to wait till after April in case any board members change. Because the next board might not want to do the same thing as us.
Yes.
Um, but that's about it. And one interesting though, uh, going as to why I was flipping through the radio station driving today on CPR, which is what Colorado Public Radio. There was an article about rights of nature.
Right, yeah.
Yes, those make um, like podcasts about it. And they actually talked about lions. Then how really it doesn't have any teeth, but it's still nice to have. So.
They made the news yet again. Need our media man. Okay, um, so LAHC met, we discussed ongoing work. They're having a retreat on Sunday. That is, of course, an open meeting. I won't be attending. Um, saw some great photos of Doliver and sculpture. It's looking really great. They actually cast her actual glasses. And um, it's really, it's gonna be great. So they're still raising money for that. So um, you'll be able to, I think people will be able to buy a brick. So you know, they're putting, you know, or they're putting at the depot they're doing, I can't remember what it's called, when you can buy a brick for something, but.
Sponsor.
You know what I mean? So you can buy a brick, have your name or a message written in it. Anyway. Um, so look for that. Dr. Cog is tomorrow night. Trustee Edding has graciously agreed to go in that place.
Yes.
The Metro Mayor's Caucus is having a full day retreat on Saturday in Longtree, which I will be attending. And the next full caucus will be on February seventh. I've been working with the school district, um, the high school to potentially have students attend the Metro Mayor's Caucus with me, which the town of Superior did. They brought a bus slow down. The kids loved it. They get free breakfast burritos. They get to go to the Denver Mint or the Capitol or whatever they make a deal, but so I'm hoping that that'll happen. Um, okay. Let's do a summary of action items. Dolores, do you have a summary of action items?
I do. I only have a couple of things. Um, so I may need your help. I've got um, item one, Melody with CDPHG is to send over, and I didn't catch what report it was, that she's to send to the Board of Trustees.
Some macro verberate study.
The macro verberate studies, yep.
Thank you. Then I have ordinance eleven fifty-six passes to second reading with amendments. Then I have the HHSC report with comments from Derek is to be forwarded to the Board of Trustees. Also, the board has opted for a modest, less, less expensive fence with signage on the summit lot. And that's all I have.
Thank you. The only other thing I have was um, there was a question of does, um, how does the town supplement EcoPass and Z trips? That was earlier. So I want to just confirm where that is in our budget for whomever asked that question. And I guess we will move forward with drafting a resolution to adopt or accept the Housing Future Study and um, for our next meeting. Thank you. Wait, attorney Gittman, do you have anything?
Sorry, I muted myself. Only the atoms are already sent in the revised ordinance. That one can be checked off.
And HHSC can be checked on. Yes, I, I'd like to, um, I'm gonna forge you my list for um.
The assessment?
The. Yeah. Do you want the list?
Yeah, sure. I took, I took notes, but we'll take it. I think Derek was taking one.
Okay, I'll just do that to you real quick. Great. Okay, thank you. So um, is there a motion to go into a very short executive session? Yes. Oh, that's, I'm, I think I can do it.
You're great. I saw, I forgot to tell you, because I, I'm looking past, myself, Claudia and Lisa Ramsey are planning on having, on attending the Golden Canyon, Hosen Summit.
Oh, good. February twenty, January twenty ninth. Um, we all can remember just.
No, I need to talk to you about that tour.
Yep, okay. Great, thank you for doing that.
Well, well, um, maybe I have, I, I looked at it, but you said. No, I remember you said, told me you didn't. I looked and it.
Can you send over the exact session language, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so um, executive sessions are closed to the public.
Okay. Should end so that they.
Yeah, I mean, you're welcome, you're welcome to stay well retreated.
It's about, yeah.
Where the, the executive session is about a piece of property that um, we're ta- we've been talking about transferring to the town. Essentially.
You're more than welcome to listen to the reasons, you know, why we're having these executives, when we read it in. But after that, you, you won't be allowed to be here.
Oh, okay. I think I'm gonna head out.
Yeah, don't feel pressured, you know? Feel free to say if you want to.
Yeah, do I need to do anything for the way for you to?
Stop the YouTube. Once we finish reading in the, the language, which hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I think Dolores is, um, I think sending out a, a new Zoom link. And then after we move into executive session, that's when we'll you'll end this meeting and start that meeting. Okay. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four E, twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B, for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators and for legal advice from attorneys representing the town regarding this state that you fell and the legal questions regarding the transfer of property for Keith Bell's estate to the town.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And that passes unanimously.
Okay. You're good, that Victoria. So we're uh, waiting. Dolores, are you sending out the link?
If she doesn't have it, I do.
Um, I, I sent the link to Maria. I think Victoria has it. So she'll just need to start it on that laptop. And then I'm sending you the language right now, mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Victoria, I'll need that link too, of course, so.
Um, Dolores, I.
I have, I can forward this.
It's in her email, is what she said.
I'll forward it to you. I have it.
No, forward it to.
Brandon?
Brandon and me. Or Brandon and.
Actually, just Brandon, because you're gonna start the meeting there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll be back. And this um, won't take long.
Okay. Did you see it afternoon? Brandon, it's what had me screwed up. From Maria.
Yes.
Did she send to my old email, maybe?
Just send, oh yeah, maybe that word. I pissed off until.
Okay, I got it. I just got it.
Mayor, did you get the executive session language?
Um, I did, but it's telling me it's a SharePoint deal that I can't access.
Oh, okay, let me save it.
It'll be helpful on these, it didn't have the person's name, but the address too, because I have no idea who Keith Bell is.
Well, well.
It's complicated, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give you the background.
Yeah.
There's several, but you're right, that would make it more specific. We should, we'll try, especially with the new legislation.
So I'm just waiting to make sure everyone has it before I leave this meeting.
Oh yeah, I have the link if you want, if you just want to go ahead and end this one and start the new one.
Did that work, mayor?
Yes, it did. Thank you so much. Okay.